The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM on this 12th day of March 2024. Thank you to everyone who has joined us here in person and online. If you would, please join us in a moment of silence. Please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we will have our recognitions, and we're going to start with the Outstanding Assistant Principal for Thorogood Elementary.
This is my first paragraph. Our first recognition this evening is for the administrators who will be representing Virginia for the National Outstanding Assistant Principal Award. Please welcome Thorogood Elementary Assistant Principal Megan Thompson. The Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals has selected Assistant Principal Megan Thompson of Thorogood Elementary to represent the Commonwealth for the National Outstanding Assistant Principal Award. On February 20th, Thorogood Elementary surprised Mrs. Thompson with an assembly, flowers, and a visit from Superintendent Donald Robertson and statewide representatives like Virginia's Superintendent of Public Instruction Lisa Coons. Congratulations, Mrs. Thompson, very proud of you.
Our next recognition this evening is the VHSL Individual Gymnastics All Around Competition Champion. Please welcome Sophia Catlin of Kellum High School. Sophia is the 2024 5A All Around Gymnastic Champion and a part of the Region 5A Gymnastic Championship Team. She helped lead the Kellum Knights to become the 2024 VHSL Class 5 Gymnastics Team Runner-Up. She is the VHSL Gymnastics All Around Champion and also placed second on bars and third on beam at the VHSL Individual Gymnastics Competition. Sophia's coaches at Kellum are Alana and Mariana Parker. Congratulations, Sophia, we're proud of you.
And finally, the Class 5 State Champion Gymnastics Team and State Champion Uneven Bars Ocean Lakes High School Team and Julia Lee. Our next recognition this evening is the State Champion Gymnastics Team. Please welcome the Lady Dolphins of Ocean Lakes High School. The Ocean Lakes High School Gymnastics Team won the Class 5 Team State Championships on February 16th. This was the second team win for the Dolphins. The first win was in 2020. The team members are Addison Carney, Sierra Edney, Catherine Kat Elliott, Samantha Sam Grimes, Tatum Heckstein, Julia Lee, Lily Lipsky, Juliana Morris, Arianna Ari O'Brien, Camille Snellinger, Charlie Snellinger, Margaret or Maggie Sokozik, Katie Wilkinson, Yasmin Williams, and Carly Wiles. The Dolphins are coached by Jennifer Ramey. The team finished the regular season 10 to 0 for the eighth year in a row. Throughout this season, the team practiced four or five days a week to increase their difficulty in each routine. They gave 100% at each practice and cheered each other on at meets. Along with being amazing gymnasts and teammates, they are also a well-balanced group of young women. They are members of numerous clubs and school and are honor roll students. Senior Julia Lee won the statewide uneven bars event on February 17th. She was also third in the floor event. Congratulations, Dolphins. We are proud of you. And this concludes the School Board recognitions for this evening.
Oh, let's go. I'll give them a second to get out. Okay, now the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Okay, seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I know, I can't vote, I'm not on there. All right, motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? All right, voting, now the voting board's open. There it is. How do you vote? She's just not connected, she's an I.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes for the motion for the adoption of the agenda, so the motion did pass.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, so there's no superintendent's report this evening, but there are recognitions. And Dr. Robertson, we look forward to your recognitions.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. We've got three recognitions tonight. We'll start with Laura Salentano. Laura is currently Assistant Principal at Fairfield Elementary for a few more minutes. And then we are pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next principal at Brookwood Elementary School. I see you brought some guests. Congratulations. Also with us tonight is Shayna Remian. Shayna currently Assistant Principal at Kellum High School, and we are pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next principal at Virginia Beach Middle School. Welcome. And I see you have some guests. And then finally, we have Bethany Bayless, currently an admin assistant at Kestrel Middle School. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation to be the next Assistant Principal at Kellum High School, since now there's a vacancy. And you have some guests. Congratulations. This is a point we also thank the families, because when you move into this role, you see a little less of these individuals, but the work they do is so important to the success of this division. So thank you, best of luck, we got your back.
Nice, congratulations. Okay, so this evening, we have three sets of minutes to approve. So the first is the February 13th, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any modifications? All right, no modifications, so motion made by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Riggs, any discussion? The voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, the motion did pass for the approval of the minutes for February 13th.
Okay, great, and now on to February 20th. Are there any modifications to those minutes? All right, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion, Ms. Anderson, second Ms. Brown, any discussion? The voting board is open.
Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, the motion did pass for the approval of the minutes from February 20th.
And now February 27th, Regular School Board Meeting Minutes. Any modifications as presented? Seeing none, motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, the motion did pass for the approval of the February 27th Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. The School Board will now hold a public hearing regarding appointment of interim School Board Member District 4 at the March 12th, 2024 School Board Meeting. Speakers shall be allocated three minutes each. The following applicants being considered for the interim School Board Member District 4 appointments are Georgia Allen, Anisa Bowden, Dr. Alvita Green, and Shannon Kendrick. After the public hearing, the School Board will hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose of the public comment section of the School Board Agenda is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board Meeting. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker for the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speakers are Kelly Hendrick, then Dr. Alvita Green, then Pamela Riddick.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I am Kelly Hendrick. I retired from Virginia Beach after 28 years of service. Tonight, I come before you to speak in support of an incredible educator, leader, and community advocate who has graciously volunteered to once again serve the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Dr. Alvita Green embodies the best of professionalism, responsibility, and integrity in service of the greater good. She is the epitome of excellence, and this board, this administration, and this community need her service as a School Board Member. Throughout her distinguished career, Alvita Green demonstrated an unwavering commitment to education and a deep understanding of the challenges as well as the opportunities facing our schools. Her resume of service is unparalleled. She brings a wealth of experience in student support, budget and finance, community engagement, policy and regulations, and strategic planning. While you have a number of qualified applicants, no one has the experience, knowledge, understanding, skills, or the passion for education that Dr. Green once again offers this organization. Truthfully, I asked her what in the world she was thinking, jumping back into this level of work? And just let me say why, Alvita is the poster child for a wonderful retirement. For her, the sense of responsibility always, always, to her community overrides the trappings of what is convenient. As a division employee, I watched many transitions of new board members, and I understand the time it can take for someone to become acclimated to the work. While I'm sure the other applicants for this open board position are strong, well-intentioned, and capable individuals, none have the experience that Dr. Green brings to this board on the first minute of the first hour of the first day on the dais. This is no indictment against anyone else who has unselfishly agreed to serve, but time, place, skill set, and background matter most when it is March in any school division. Budget decisions, community feedback on myriad issues, transition of a new superintendent, and polarizing social and academic issues necessitate the right person. Virginia Beach City Public Schools is fortunate that Alvita Green is willing to fill this vacancy. I encourage you to welcome her openly and put her to work without delay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Alvita Green, then Pamela Riddick, then Dr. Norma Brummage.
Good evening, Madam Chair Melnick, Members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. I am Dr. Alvita Green. I am no stranger to most of you. I retired from Virginia Beach City Public Schools in 2022 as the Executive Director for the Office of Student Support Services. I stand before you this evening because I have applied for the interim appointment for the District 4 School Board vacancy. You may ask why. My why is defined by my passion for creating impactful change in the lives of others. As a member of the School Board, I will have this impact through governance to ensure the academic, social, emotional, and career development of all students. As an employee, I was often considered a change agent for the initiatives that were implemented under my leadership. This collaboration with each of you will empower the generation of changemakers, thus ensuring a sustainable legacy of progress that will endure far beyond any of our tenures. The restructuring of the school counseling program is one of my legacies. I will add to the discussion about school counselors and other constituencies of the budget. I understand the CIP process based on my experience as the administrator of the Plaza Annex. I recognize that Betty F. Williams in Bayside Elementary School, they are in District 4 and are included in the upcoming CIP. Your discussion about gifted education programs are not new. I have been a part of those discussions in the past. I need to acknowledge that the schools in District 4 have unique needs. Most are Title I schools such as Diamond Springs and Newtown Road Elementary Schools. Penbrook Elementary and Renaissance Academy serves special populations. Primarily, I understand the future challenges of the schools in District 4. I can continue to cite examples as to why I am the most prepared and qualified applicant for the District 4 appointment, but my task this evening is to assure you that if I am selected to fulfill the position of School Board Member for District 4, I will implement the responsibilities with fidelity. I am dedicated to working collaboratively with each of you in a nonpartisan manner for the benefit of students, staff, and our community. I am prepared to hit the ground running as your School Board Member from District 4. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pamela Riddick, then Dr. Norma Brummage, then Winfried Ridley.
Greetings, Chairwoman Melnick, Members of the School Board, and Superintendent Robertson. My name is Pamela Riddick, and I was born and raised in Princeess Anne County, now Virginia Beach. I attended Virginia Beach Public Schools, and I was one of the first to integrate Bayside High School in the 1960s. My mother left the classroom at Betty F. Williams after a couple of years as a teacher and became a reading diagnostician, and ultimately was one of the first African-American language arts supervisors in the Virginia Beach school system. My father had the vision and developed the historic L&amp;J Gardens, which is located in District 4, which is affectionately named after my grandparents, so as such, my family legacy runs deep in Virginia Beach. I am here to support my friend, Dr. Alvita Green's, application for District 4 interim School Board seat appointment. While Dr. Green retired as an Executive Director in 2022, she made an indelible mark and left a legacy of excellence and achievement within the framework of education and in the Virginia Beach public school community. She is a seasoned leader, administrator, advocate, and counselor. Your problem does not have to be her problem to get her undivided attention and support. She is always ready to exercise her unique skills as a critical thinker and a problem solver in any situation. As the oldest daughter of parents that both excelled as educators, she exudes the strength of persistence in her character as a former administrator and her tenacity in problem-solving and her keen sense of diligence in getting the job done. I reside in a neighborhood in District 4 near Dr. Green. We share memberships in several organizations. Her demeanor is the same in all venues, and she carries herself above reproach. Dr. Alvita Green will be an asset. She is my friend to the Virginia Beach School Board, and I thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Norma Brummage, Winfried Ridley, and then Karen DiMaggio.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the School Board, and Superintendent Robertson. I am Dr. Norma Brummage, Professor Emerita from Norfolk State University. I am here to support the application of Dr. Alvita J. Green for the position of interim School Board Member for District 4. During my tenure at Norfolk State University, I held the positions of Department Chair for Secondary Education and School Leadership and Program Coordinator for the Master of Arts and School Counseling. Prior to my employment at the university, I worked in the School Division as an English teacher, school counselor, and Department Chair for School Counseling at Great Net Middle School and Ocean Lakes High School. I am sharing this information to inform you that I am aware of the culture of the School Division and the type of School Board Member that is needed to continue the work of this current board. I met Dr. Green in 2005. She had recently been hired by Virginia Beach City Public Schools. With her positions as Coordinator of Guidance Services and Director of Guidance Services and my position as professor at Norfolk State University, we collaborated for the purposes of preparing and training graduate students in the ASCA model to ensure the candidates were prepared to assist students and their families. This partnership also afforded equity and employment for the graduates. With the leadership of Dr. Green as the Executive Director of the Office of Student Services from 2016 to 2022, educational programs and services were provided to all students enrolled in the School Division. Therefore, I believe her expertise in program development can be utilized by the board to ensure the welfare of the students, and this division is a priority. There were multiple bills developed in the 2024 General Assembly that would impact all school divisions in the Commonwealth. For example, in the 2024 House Sessions, bills were developed to address issues pertaining to support and services for homeless students, ways to decrease public school staffing ratio for school counselors, and mental health awareness training. In the 2024 Senate Sessions, bills were formulated that addressed school counselors, public school staffing, and increases in specialized support positions. Primarily, I believe that this interim School Board position needs someone who understands educational, legislative, and societal matters. This person is Dr. Alvita J. Green. I ask that you give her your optimal consideration for this vacancy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Winfried Ridley, Karen DiMaggio, and then Sonya Morning-Smith.
Good evening. My name is Winfried Ridley. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach and a retired VB CPS teacher. I retired in 2020 as a special education teacher from Bayside High School. My lovely wife and I also had three children who graduated from Salem High School when Dr. Robertson was principal. And we are the proud grandparents of three students currently enrolled in Virginia Beach Public Schools. This evening, I am here as President of the Virginia State University Alumni Association, Tide Water Alumni Chapter, in support of Dr. Alvita Green for the School Board vacancy in District 4. Dr. Green is a lifetime member of our chapter and a proud graduate of Virginia State University. Did you know that Betty F. Williams Elementary School is named in honor of Betty Forbes Williams, who also graduated from Virginia State College in 1922, before Virginia State became a university? Miss Betty F. Williams was a teacher who became the second supervisor of Negro elementary schools in Princeess Anne County. The Tide Water Alumni Chapter currently has a community partnership with Betty F. Williams, which is one of several schools in District 4 where Dr. Green resides. Betty F. Williams, throughout her life, nurtured and cared for all students regardless of race or ethnic background, encouraging them to follow their dreams. Dr. Green's professional career also ensured that all students could follow their dreams and reach their full potential. As a member of the Virginia State University Alumni Association, Tide Water Alumni Chapter, Dr. Green has assisted many VB CPS students in receiving full scholarships to our university far above the Appomattox River in Etchrick, Virginia. Your appointment of Dr. Green to the District 4 School Board seat will continue the legacy started by Ms. Betty F. Williams. Dr. Green is a dedicated educator and active community member with experiences that make her more than qualified to work collaboratively with each of you, not only for the students and families in District 4, but for all Virginia Beach students and families. I would like to take a moment to ask any members of our chosen family who are present to stand, and with that, in my remarks, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Karen DiMaggio, then Sonya Morning-Smith, then Kathleen Slindy.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Members, Dr. Robertson. My name is Karen DiMaggio, and I am speaking to you tonight in support of Dr. Alvita Green, who I believe is an excellent candidate for the interim School Board Member position that is currently open for District 4. I currently am the principal of the Hospital School Programs at CHKD. Prior to this, I worked for VB CPS for, and I was lucky, for 27 years and had the opportunity to work with Dr. Green for five of those years. I was part of the Student Support Services where Dr. Green was the Executive Director. I know her on both a professional and personal level. I recently learned that Dr. Green was being considered for this School Board position and feel that her having a role on the School Board only makes sense. There are multiple reasons, as you've heard prior to me, but I would also like to add just a couple of reasons why she should be considered for this position. The first would be her knowledge of the School Division. Dr. Green worked most of her career in Virginia Beach. She was influential in decision-making and knows what is needed to support schools and central office so they do their best work for students. She understands the mission, the vision, and the working of VB CPS. She would be an asset to the She would be an asset to the School Board because of her knowledge of the strengths and needs of the division. For another reason Dr. Green would be great for the School Board is her passion for serving students. If you've interacted with Dr. Green or have worked for her, you know that her decision-making has always been based on what is best for kids. Anything that she has had to decide on or lead was always about doing what was needed for students. She enjoys working for students and understands their needs academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally. Finally, a probably most important reason to me for Dr. Green making a great interim School Board Member is her character. Dr. Green has great integrity, as you've already heard from many before me. She is proven herself willing to make the right and sometimes difficult decisions. She shares what's on her mind in a firm, fair, and respectful way. And she's also a great listener who is open to ideas, opinions, and input from others. She makes those she interacts with feel like they matter, and she connects with people because she genuinely cares. I was lucky to work with Dr. Green and to get to know her on a personal and professional level. My time with her made me better. I think she would be a true asset to the School Board. I believe she would work to represent District Four while also working to support and do what is needed for students, families, teachers, administrators, central office staff of all of Virginia Beach. Her serving on the School Board, to me, just makes sense. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sonia Morning Smith, Kathleen Slindy, and then Sheri Briggs.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Members, and Superintendent Robertson. My name is Sonia Morning Smith, and I am the former Cabinet Secretary for the New Mexico Department of Veteran Services. I've recently returned to the area, so it is indeed a pleasure to be here. I am a military veteran. My service extends to my time as a medic in the Air Force Reserve where I served during Desert Shield and Desert Storm. I continue to be active with the military organizations and serve as an advocate locally at the state and national levels for all our veterans and their families. This evening, I'm here to support Dr. Alveda Green for the interim appointment to the vacant School Board seat in District Four. Dr. Green and I share a special bond of sisterhood through our membership in Delta Sigma Theta. And those members here, would you just stand up real quickly, wave your hands, and sit back down, because I'm on the clock. Okay. Another connection I share with Dr. Green as an Air Force veteran is that early in her professional career as an English teacher, she instructed military-affiliated students in a Department of Defense-dependent school in Ramstein, Germany. Virginia Beach Public Schools currently has about 15,000 military-affiliated students enrolled. As a member of the military community, I would like to highlight the impact Dr. Green had on military families while she was employed with her school division. Under Dr. Green's leadership, Virginia Beach Schools was one of the first school divisions in Virginia to implement the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. This compact ensures smooth transitions for military-affiliated students enrolling or leaving your school division. Dr. Green's support for military-affiliated students also include their hiring military school counselors, as well as partnerships with the Department of Defense for Military Family Life Counselors to provide additional support at your schools with high enrollment of military-affiliated students. Dr. Green's partnership and collaboration with military school liaison officers is highly regarded in the military community and a model for other school divisions. The art of being a military child event is one outcome of this partnership. As my sister in Delta, Dr. Green exemplifies our guiding principles of scholarship, public service, and sisterhood. Her commitment to scholarship and public service is evident, so her appointment to District Four School Board seat would be of paramount importance and service to this community and Virginia Beach Public Schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, Sheri Briggs, and then Anisa Bowden.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, School Board Members, Dr. Robertson, and staff. My name is Kathleen Slindy. I'm the President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here to address you regarding the appointment of an interim School Board Member for District Six, or Four. Four. This seat formerly held by Mrs. Stacy Martin, who was, she was elected by the voters in District Four as someone who represented their educational priorities and interests. I believe that's very important, as you consider you are not just filling a vacancy. You are charged to fill it with someone worthy of the respect and trust of those who elected Ms. Martin, Mrs. Martin. And because of that, I would challenge you to choose someone who has a working knowledge and experience with public education from a teaching and leading perspective, who can engage in meaningful discussions and make decisions that support and promote public education. I respect the challenge that those of you who came to the board without such a background and have diligently sought to understand the unique challenges and the needs of public education students and employees. I think you would agree that this is a learning curve that is very steep. So, I'm not going to say anyone in particular, but I believe as you listen to and interview the candidates who have stepped forward, I believe we need to add someone to the board who can hit the ground running and help the school division navigate the next nine months. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sheri Briggs, Anisa Bowden, and then Peggy Haggins.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening, Madam Board Chair and Superintendent Robertson as well. My name is Sheri Briggs, and I work as a Senior Vice President, Academy Leader for a major financial institution for the last 19 years in the city of Virginia Beach. My husband has been a special education teacher for 25 years at the Renaissance Academy for CSEP program. I am here this evening in support of my aunt, Dr. Alveda Green. You have heard from others why Aunt Alveda is qualified as for the District Four interim School Board appointment. I've had the honor to see her journey from the view of a child. I've watched her grow from a young educator to becoming Dr. Green and now a retired educator. My summer breaks as a child was often spent with my aunt and uncle in their home in Chesterfield County. And during those summers, you know, I fell in love with reading there with them because their home was found, was centered around education. Even when people are normally playing and children are playing during the summer, not at my aunt's house, we may, we had dedicated time to learning. Her home was always filled with endless books and activities that enhanced my creativity and kept me wanting to seek more knowledge. She encouraged me never to settle, to always walk in my destiny and pursue education as an avenue to success. Aunt Alveda has been a role model to so many, especially to me. Because of her advocacy for education, her mentorship, and acts of service in the community, I stand here today as a proud college graduate with two degrees and as her sorority through my membership in our sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. My aunt has helped to shape the person I am. I get to follow in her legacy each and every day in the corporate setting by helping adult learners build strong interpersonal skills and business acumen to grow and develop core conferences. You will not find a more resolute or committed individual to the education and safety of our future leaders. She always leads with grace. Her passion and volunteerism to serve others are attributes that are invaluable for creating positive change in our community and our educational system. I know my aunt will collaborate closely with all stakeholders and work tirelessly for each student in the school district. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anisa Bowden, Peggy Haggins, and then Shannon Kendrick.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Superintendent Robertson, and Board Members, of course. My name is Anisa Bowden, and I would like your support for District Four seat because I intend on running for the seat in November, and I intend on winning. I am an advocate for students. I am a retired teacher. I know I look young, but I'm a retired teacher, and I've been retired for three years. I'm committed to setting high standards and expectations for student achievement and quality instructional practices for all students, just like you. I put children first. I'm also an advocate for teachers. I hold a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's in educational administration. Yes, I have a principal license from Oldham University. Both of my degrees and all of my money went to ODU. Yes, in addition, I've taught gifted students and students with disabilities, and I've been Department Chair of English and Reading Teacher of the Year. And I allowed my students to dunk me in a tub of water if they read their reading goals. Yes, I did. And I served as building representative for Teachers Union for over 25 years. And I was the one that probably meanted this phrase that could have been sent in an email. I'm also an advocate for our parents and community leaders. I have a proud, rising ninth grader who will be an actress one day, and she did make the academy cut. Yes, indeed. And I am the one who's always at the back of the pickup line for an hour and a half almost every day. I feel your pain, parents. And once I retired, I started subbing at our surrounding schools, and I have something to say. Gum does not go under your chair. I've been volunteering at our surrounding schools, and I have something to say about our teachers. They are the best at what they do. If I am chosen to be a School Board Member, I will be a collaborative partner with everyone in our communities to establish a strong structure that engages all stakeholders in achieving a shared district, all shared district goals. Thank you for having me.
Our next speaker is Peggy Haggins, then Shannon Kendrick, then Ashley McLeod.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Robertson. My name is Peggy Haggins, and I am a resident of District Four. My husband, Robert F. Haggins Jr., was the Chairman of the Virginia Beach City Public School Board from 1996 through 1998. Our three children graduated from Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Our two daughters are graduates of Bayside High School and excelling in their professional careers. Our son was in the first graduating cohort of students enrolled in the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial School, High School. He is now a practicing attorney. My husband also served as a judge in the Second Judicial Circuit of Virginia in the Virginia Beach Circuit Court. I am here this evening in support of my dear friend, Dr. Alveda Green. You have her professional resume, so I will share some personal qualities about my friend. Alveda will make an excellent School Board Member. She is supportive, caring, compassionate, honest, loyal, dependable, and trustworthy. Alveda will work with each of you conjointly in a nonjudgmental manner. She is a calming force who always makes you feel validated and appreciated regardless of your stance on an issue. Alveda will be a dedicated School Board Member who will always honor and respect the School Board's code of ethics. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shannon Kendrick, then Ashley McLeod, then David Cutchins.
Thank you, esteemed members of the School Board, for this opportunity to share a little bit about myself and why I'm qualified to join you in service to the children and families of Virginia Beach. Like many children in Virginia Beach, I too am a daughter of two Air Force veterans. I went to nine schools, so I can relate. Many of you remember me as District Chief of Staff for Congressman Rigel, and I want to work with you all to establish and advance the solutions that we need to maintain Virginia Beach's position as the premier school district in the Commonwealth. I bring you six years of experience with managing constituent services for a congressional district over 700,000 constituents. And oftentimes, they had my cell phone number, and they often called me about School Board issues, which I politely turned them over to you all. But as a former Senior Vice President at the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, I will also bring economic workforce alignment, and that expertise is valuable. I also served our nation in a diplomatic capacity as the Director of Strategic Partnerships and Intergovernmental Affairs at the Peace Corps for three years, and I understand how important it is to develop globally competitive students. Finally, as it relates to academia, I was a professor of business at ITT Tech for three years, and I served as an Assistant Director of the School of Government at Regent University. And I currently serve on the Board of the Life Enrichment Center, a nonprofit that's devoted to tutoring our young people in elementary. I know that I have not formally been a part of the K-12 system, but that's something that each of you already bring to this body. I understand that there's a learning curve, but I am a fast learner. I have a fierce work ethic, and I took on that congressional role at 31 years of age without any training or any know-how of how to manage such a large operation, and I did it successfully for six years. And how I did it was I sat with each of my congressional counterparts from both sides of the aisle and learned their processes, and then I did what I could to implement them and improve them for my operation. I saw lives impacted by these processes. I worked to ease the work environment, and that's what I do in every role, and that's what I'll do if I'm appointed to serve with you. From watching hours of your School Board sessions, my observations are that I could bring my relationships from the community and the government to help advance the goals and the initiatives of our body that we collectively form together. Every leader in our city understands that the school system is the most important element and anchor that determines whether or not a city thrives or if it declines, and I want to work with you all to invest in, strengthen, and secure our city's most valuable asset, our public schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley McLeod, David Cutchins, and then Georgia Allen.
Hello. I'm Ashley McLeod. I'm a resident in the Ninth District of the City of Virginia Beach. I'm the mother of two graduates of the City of Virginia Beach Public Schools. Always a good day to be a son devil. And both of them are gainfully employed and residents of Virginia Beach, and if I'm lucky, in the next six years, I'll have a grandchild in public schools. But I also happen to be a former member who I've sat on this dais with you, and tonight I'm here to speak on behalf of Shannon Kendrick and why I believe she's a perfect candidate for District Four. I met Shannon when I was running for the first time for School Board, so you could say our lives now have gone full circle. For those of you who've known me, I've always advocated and said that the people sitting on this dais need to come from a diverse background, and I don't mean just our ethnicity or our gender and those type of things. I mean our business background. We need to have educators, but we need to have people within the community as well. So Shannon brings some of that. She, it's important that the Board reflect the makeup of the community. She not only brings her own perspectives and experiences, but she understands the perspectives of the people she served as the Director of the Second Congressional District. She knows Virginia Beach. The School Board needs members who are going to focus on the data and the details and what's best for the students. We need School Board members who come from vast experiences, I've noted, and the ability to consider and discern with those perspectives in what's best for the students, their families, the residents, and the taxpayers. Shannon absolutely fits that bill. She is a woman of integrity, ethics, compassion, and excellent reasoning and discerning skills. Shannon is a go-getter. To follow her, I, my remarks are almost unnecessary. She is going to question and challenge each and every single one of you. She is going to go and make sure she has accurate information from each and every staff member. I am absolutely 100% confident that Shannon will do her due diligence in every single decision she makes on all matters for School Board, and that every resident will feel that they have been well represented by Shannon. She's already familiar with the legislative and policy and budgeting process through her experience working at state and congressional offices, where she also learned the importance of working with others and collaborating in order to get the job done in a non-person manner. Political affiliation should have nothing to do with the Virginia Beach School Board. It does not accomplish what is best for the students, the families, the residents, and the taxpayers. She's already noted she brings a perspective of being a military daughter. Shannon knows the needs of the workforce. She mentioned working with the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliances. Businesses need to know that their schools understand what Businesses need to know that their schools understand what they need to have career-ready people right out of high school, as well as out of college. I enthusiastically recommend Shannon Kendrick to fill the vacancy for District Four, bringing new eyes to the board and the division to chart the course or get ahead of the curve with honor and grace as the amazing public servant that she is. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is David Cutchins, then Georgia Allen, then Henderson Vaughn.
Good evening, board members. I am David Cutchins. I did not initially feel like I would be speaking to you tonight because I didn't know anything about these four nominees. After the last half hour, I feel like I know Dr. Green quite well. But I still really do not know these individuals. But I was motivated instead, as I thought about what it would take for you to make this difficult and important decision, I was motivated to stand before you tonight to remind you what standard we are seeking for this important position. First, because I know there are some who want to say that if you do not currently have children in Virginia Beach Public Schools, or in this case, perhaps because I do not live in District Four, then you should not have a voice in this conversation. So let me provide my standing in this issue. I am highly vested in the success of all Virginia Beach public students because I want to see my community, my state, and my nation thrive. My standing is as a decade-plus resident of Virginia Beach, a lifelong Virginian, the grandson of a West Point-graduated, World War II veteran, retired Army Colonel, a naval veteran myself, and a retired business executive, and an American patriot. I have seen the value of well-educated citizens and employees over the course of my career, as well as the impact of not having as many of those over the past decade or so as we used to. The poor and sad impact affecting all of us. And I dare say that I have paid as much or more for Virginia and Virginia Beach Public Education over my forty-five-plus adult years than most of the folks in this room. The standard for any board member is really pretty clear and simple in my mind. We need the person who will be the best champion in educating our students, our children. This champion should be a champion for teaching truth and not lies. This person should be a champion for exposing our students to classic literature and not pornography. This person should be a champion for educating them to recognize and be able to fulfill their heritage as American citizens, and not for how to be victims. And this person should be one who sees students first as the children of their parents and not as pawns for manipulation by the school system. Someone who honors and does not seek to undermine parental authority. I wish you well in your quest to nominate the person who best meets these standards. And in doing so, we will fully support you and the efforts of the board. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Georgia Allen, Henderson Vaughn, and then Marcus Schriven.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, and members of the school board. I'm Georgia Allen. I stand before you as a candidate for the position of District Four's school board seat. As a lifetime member of the community, old Prince's End County, now Virginia Beach, and a product of Virginia Beach Public School System, it would be a privilege to serve. During segregation, I attended and graduated from Seaboard District Elementary School. And during integration, I graduated from Florida E. Kellum High School. That in and of itself is historic. With that history, I bring a wealth of knowledge, understanding, and wisdom to this position. As someone who served on the Vision 2040 Committee, which is now Vision to Action Community Coalition, I bring a futuristic vision to the city and especially to the Virginia Beach school system. I've already reviewed our assets, challenges, and our opportunities. And I see our opportunities and our ability to help our youth crystallize their dreams and their visions and make them a reality, which is exactly what the mission of Vision 2040 Committee was. I would like to see Virginia Beach as the foundation of the future or the East Coast Silicon Valley, the creative platform of coastal America, and the new and next technological center of the world. Virginia Beach can be that next AI. And I don't mean artificial intelligence. I mean arena of innovation and the next ROI, and not return on investments, but return on intelligence. We want our students to come back and stay here in Virginia Beach. I am not your typical thought leader, but I am a consensus steward for good. Oh, and when it comes to the possibility of removal of TikTok, why not just look right here at home with our Virginia Beach schools? We have Lance Town STEM and Technology and Kinsfield Entrepreneurship and Business Academies. Why don't we just talk to our young people? They can probably do the next TikTok and be better than what it is currently. Next, I am fortunate to live just three minutes from two of the district schools in District Four and five minutes from the remaining district schools. Therefore, I have the flexibility to be engaged and involved for the benefit of the youth, the teachers, and the administration. And I take this opportunity very seriously. And while I could have used my time to talk about books and buildings and behavior, I choose to spend time speaking about a vision for our youth and our school system. And should I have the opportunity to be selected as District Four's school board member, I will work to improve the outcomes of the district and the entire school system. Again, I am Georgia F. Allen, and I would like to thank you for your time. And I look forward to serving District Four and the school board system.
Our next speaker is Henderson Vaughn, then Marcus Schriven. Speaker number eighteen had to cancel, then it'd be Patty Staubach.
Good evening to everybody on the school board. This is my first time here, so I don't know the names. But one thing I do know, that I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, and a great-great-grandfather. Five of my sons graduated from Bayside High. My granddaughters are in the schools from Prince's End. But what I'm here to say is, I know Georgia Allen for a long time. We have served on different committees in getting people on city council and to be elected to be president. But the thing I want to talk about the most is the representation of the future generation. Excuse me. We have a lot of young people dying in the streets, dropping out of school, being bullied, and committing suicide. The person that you choose has to have compassion and be directed to be in the community. All the candidates that you have that are already presented there, they're what they have already accomplished. But I'm here because of the young people that we are losing to the streets. Georgia Allen works in the community. She's passionate about the young people. And the focus I look at is where are we going to come together for the future? Because young people are leaving Virginia Beach. My son graduated from Bayside, my youngest. He's now in the Army. He said he may not come back to Virginia Beach. But then again, he said, maybe I'll change my mind and come back and run for city council. But the thing is, we all here have compassion and looking forward to young people being able to take somebody's seat up there. But if we don't make the right choices, the right decisions, and each and every candidate that came up is qualified. But I came to speak for Georgia Allen. I don't have to repeat the things about her credentials because I mostly know y'all who know her. I thank you for taking time to listen to me, and I'm sorry I got emotional. But when it comes to kids, thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcus Schriven, and then Patty Staubach.
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies, honorable members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent. I rise for the privilege and honor of supporting Shannon Kendrick to be appointed to District Four for the vacancy. Rather than using prepared remarks, I want to talk to you from the heart about Shannon. Y'all heard about her qualifications, her experiences, her community work. Let me tell you a little more about Shannon. Shannon, who is my neighbor, is like the commercial we all see, lack a good neighbor, Shannon is there. And I say that in practicality, too. We have a homeowners association, like a lot of you do. Shannon moved to our neighborhood a few years ago and immediately became active and offered her time and commitment to work with the homeowners. Now, I want to tell you a little bit more about Shannon's involvement with the community. I met Shannon more than ten years ago when she was the district director for the congressman that she spoke of, Scott Regal. And I know that initially, I got drafted after I came here about twelve or thirteen years ago to various boards of directors, the Urban League, Teens with a Purpose, you name it. And I was amazed that Shannon was involved with these groups. And I made sure she got more involved with these groups. And as a matter of fact, Shannon probably does not recall, but the first time I attended a meeting of two-hundred-plus men for the young students, Shannon invited me to be at her table as a guest at the event because she supported the event. Later on, Shannon took her time and got involved with Teens with a Purpose. I don't know how many of you are familiar with them. Shannon devoted her time and effort to that. And I enjoyed being her friend because later on, I got invited again to another table where she was involved with the young professionals of the Urban League. And then she was on the board with me of the Urban League. So we tried to keep her involved. I want to also mention that with the Sea-Tac community, you're familiar with the Sea-Tac community. Shannon was highly involved with that. Of course, you know Mr. Menz and whatnot. And again, she showed up for those events to support the students for scholarships, to college and whatnot, high school students. So I want you to get to know the Shannon that I know. With all the qualifications, she will be a nonpartisan member of the school board. I ask you to appoint her. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patty Staubach.
Good evening. I am, this is my first time to ever do this. I'm Patty Staubach, and I'm a friend of Georgia Allen. I met her in tenth grade at Kellum. So we both just stayed in the city. We've raised our children, and now our grandchildren are in the schools. She's at a really good age to do this job because she's retired. And she still has really excellent health. She's so enthusiastic. She's always fighting for the underdog. She's got a big desire, but she also has time. And like she said, she lives close to all the schools. She is just dying to get in there and talk to children, interact with children. Not just talk to children, but listen to children. I find her not just passionate, but compassionate. Her, let's see, it's really wrecked here. She is a lovely mix of creativity, creative person. She's open-minded. She's a really good listener. She's a really good talker. She is sold on what she's sold on, but she's open-minded. I think she would just be a great asset to the board. She's practical. She's a team member, and she's in it to win it. So anyway, I hope you select Mr. Georgia. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our online speakers. The first speaker is not online, so we will go to Jenna Murray. Please unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Murray. Please continue.
Perfect, thank you. Welcome, school board members, chairman, and also vice chair and Madam Superintendent. My name is Jenna Murray, and I am a Virginia Beach resident as well as a business owner in the City of Virginia Beach and Town Center. I would like to speak on behalf of Ms. Alveda Green. I'm currently the president of the Legacy at Baker condo. And I had the honor of serving alongside Ms. Alveda Green for several years. Dr. Green and I served, I think it was two years together, while working side by side with Dr. Green in our HOA. Dr. Green attended all the meetings and made significant contributions for ensuring that our community remained viable, safe, and that our homeowner covenants and governing documents were relevant for our residents and any issues that came up in our community. Dr. Green is always prepared for our meetings by reviewing any documents and ongoing discussions prior to our meeting, and always had great value and input to help resolve any outstanding issues or new business that came upon us. Dr. Green is no longer on our board at this time. However, she does remain active in our community. She has and still collaborates with our landscapers. As one of her greatest hobbies is gardening. And she has helped us immensely through some of those decisions in that manner. Dr. Green is in retirement, and she still checks on our neighborhood and our neighborhood students to make sure that they're ready for school and periodically goes out through the school year. She's helped one of our neighbors navigate services for a child under IDA. The student now has a special school bus that picks him up every day. And she is a true asset and gem to everyone that she has encountered. I would value Dr. Green as my confidant, my neighbor, and my friend in our community legacy at Baker. Please allow Dr. Green to continue her legacy with Virginia Beach School Board and our representative for the school board in District Four. I know that she'll be bringing a nurturing demeanor and the love of her community at large to the school board and to the students. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, that was our last person for the public hearing. We're going on to public comments. We'll start with our students. We have Sarah Cantor, Sidney Norwood, and then Orin Howell.
Hello, my name is Sarah Cantor, and I go to come from middle school. When I heard the news that the music department was in trouble, I was devastated. I couldn't believe that they would diminish me and my peers' passion. Most of the people who are trying to take music away from us don't even understand how much of an impact it has on our lives. I started playing the violin in fifth grade. And ever since then, it has been my dream to become an orchestra teacher. I am now in eighth grade with no orchestra offered for my grade, causing me to fall behind on my plan for the future. I thought school was supposed to help all students be successful in life, and that is only possible if it supports the students interested in the arts, too. According to an article by California State University, music affects students academically and personally. And if it were not for school music programs, students would not be exposed to playing an instrument or music history in general. Because of this, we would not have as many musicians as we have today, which is still not very many. I read that there is a proposal to combine all students in each music strand into one orchestra, one band, and one chorus because of extremely small class sizes. But you need to take into consideration the blend of beginners and people who have been playing for three or four years. If you put the advanced players with the beginners, they'll be held back to the basics, which is not fair to them. Every student deserves to be in a class that is specialized for their ability. For example, like I said before, my school has no orchestra for seventh, eighth grade. So on Fridays in the mornings, there's an orchestra club that is a mix of people who have never played before and people that have been playing for between two and four years. I appreciate that we have an orchestra club, but I am very I appreciate that we have an orchestra club, but I am very bored, always having to go back to the absolute bare-bones basics. People always tell, are telling me, oh, it's good to go back to the basics and it'll improve your technique. When, yes, they're partially correct. But how will I learn the more advanced material required for high school when I'm playing at a fifth grade level at school once a week? The only other option is to hire a private teacher, which I have. But that is an extra expense that my family has to pay. And some people that are less fortunate could not afford that. How is that fair? That only people doing better financially get music lessons? I feel that everyone should be exposed to the culture that is music, free of charge. I ask that the school board reconsider the decision about cutting arts funding. Because it will be very detrimental to students. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker.
I just ask the audience, please, just to hold their applause, just so that we can keep this moving. Some jazz hands will be good, thanks.
Our next speaker is Sidney Norwood, then Orin Howell, then Sarah Anderson.
Hello, my name is Sidney Norwood. I am a senior at Frank W. Cox High School. And I play viola in the Chamber Orchestra. I'm here on behalf of all my underclassmen and friends and my two younger sisters who are in the music programs. People always are telling me now that I shouldn't be getting involved. It's not my problem because I'm graduating. But it is my problem because it's my community. And music is really important to me. I started in fifth grade at John V. Die with Miss LaRusse. And I went into Great Neck Middle School for sixth and seventh grade playing before I moved overseas to Okinawa where I went to a Dodea School. They did not have orchestra. But because I knew I was going to come back here to this amazing program, I continued private lessons so that I could be in the Chamber Orchestra now. Last year, my teacher, Mr. Fields, he took us to Carnegie Hall where we played during the festival. I would not have had these amazing experiences if I had not been in the music program, if I had not been exposed to it. I've been playing for eight years. And that's eight years of my life that I want other people to have. I want other people to have these experiences. I want to ask the board members to please look past the data and look at the students and their lives and how their decisions affect them. I was able to build my confidence and be here today because I was able to build my social skills and my speaking skills and my ability to be on the spot through orchestra and music. I have found friends and made connections and, and I'm able to be supported by the people in this group. Some of the smartest people I know are in music. And one day, they will become musicians and they will be the people you're listening to in the car. But right now, they're everywhere. They're, like Ms. Melnick said at the last school board meeting, it resonated with me, that they are the ones at the football games singing the National Anthem and playing in the band. They are everywhere and they are the future. They are, their academic performance is incredibly increased because of music. I'd like to ask everybody to make sure that whatever touches the students is preserved. And that education is not just about numbers and a product. It's about the experience and it's about the journey. That is the kind of education we are striving for. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Orin Howell, then Sarah Anderson, then Victoria Legger.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, and members of the school board, and Superintendent Robertson. My name is Orin Howell and I'm a seventh grade orchestra student at Great Neck Middle School. I'm here tonight because I'm extremely concerned they are considering cutting the budget for the arts programs. I'm here on behalf of all orchestra, band, and chorus students at my school. I've been playing the cello since fifth grade and I cannot imagine my life without it. I passionately believe that the power of music and the arts can pull you out of sadness and help manage stress along with many other benefits. I come from a very musical family with many siblings who all have different musical talents. And sitting down with our instruments has always been a way for us to connect and bond. Since I have so many siblings, my family can't afford for me to take private lessons. And without the school orchestra, I would not be able to express myself through music. It's my escape, my love, my hobby, my respite. I understand that you're not eliminating funding for the arts completely, but they are just trying to scale back on monies for these programs. However, these proposed cuts are so big that they could potentially eliminate the theater and chorus departments at Cox High School and at many other schools. These programs have to fight for the little funding that they do receive. So it seems almost ridiculous that they would have, that they're facing more potential cuts. Right here in this binder, I have letters written by the students and teachers from my school testifying to the importance of and showing the magnitude of need for these programs to continue. The arts bring people together. And almost everybody listens to some kind of music or enjoys acting, whether it be them acting or watching movies or plays or TV shows. Art brings people together. We can share laughters and tears and experiences with complete strangers. I beg you to please reconsider these proposed cuts. I beg you to think of the impact that music has had on your lives and on your children's lives. Thank you so much for your time and sincere consideration.
Could you leave that with, yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Sarah Anderson and then Victoria Legger.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Anderson. I am a sophomore at Cox High School and I am a member of the Falcon Orchestra. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the music program being cut at my school. Even though we are being told that we're not being cut, the chorus classes are being cut completely and the number of band and orchestra classes are being slimmed down. As an orchestra student, the four class system we currently have is the most effective. Two of the classes are for the large intermediate concert orchestra. One is for the advanced chamber orchestra and the other is for the beginning orchestra, which is comprised of both new musicians who've never picked up an instrument before and for students in higher levels interested in trying a different instrument. If we are to be cut down to only three classes, the structure will be messed up. There will be too many students in each class, which means our orchestra director will not be able to effectively provide specialized learning for different levels. This is especially detrimental for the beginning class as they will not be able to receive more individual instruction. Another problem with this cut is that it forces our orchestra director, Kevin Fields, to work at a second elementary school. So he'd spread, spread through between three different schools. This mainly affects students as our orchestra teacher will not be able to provide us with the amazing opportunities he has in the past. The orchestra director at Cox High School has done so many incredible things for us as an organization. Mr. Fields has put in countless hours to give us after-school rehearsals, performance opportunities, auditions, and trips. Last year, we went to New York City to perform at Carnegie Hall. And in a few weeks, we're going to participate in a national competition in Orlando, Florida. If his time is going to be divided between three different schools, he will not be able to provide these opportunities anymore and will not be able to be as involved with the students. Music programs are very important and play a major role in the positive growth of students. We are allowed to improve and develop our talents through dedication and hard work. Through expression, we are able to stretch our creative activity and become more well-rounded. Students are more likely to attend school because of our programs because they are responsible for reinvigorating a love for learning. Most importantly, these programs are welcoming, friendly environments that foster positive relationships with our peers. Orchestra, as well as any fine arts program, is a way of connecting people from all different backgrounds. Whatever your race, economic status, religion, or culture, we all are united through our shared passion for an artistic outlet that is also extremely important for the mental health and well-being of its members. My personal experience as an orchestra student has been a very meaningful part of my life. Not only do I get to develop my skills as a violinist, but I feel a sense of belonging amongst my fellow classmates even stronger than in any regular academic course. I've had the chance to share the wonderful performance opportunities and fantastic trips with the friends I have made because of this class. Our excellence as a group is exemplified through our high scores during the district assessments across all three of our levels, which would never have been possible if it weren't for the dedication and commitment of both the students and our outstanding director. Therefore, it disturbs me that even with all this incredible accomplishment and success as a program, that the school board is so quick to cut down on us. It shows disregard for the significance of the arts as well as a failure to acknowledge its impact. We need the fine arts in our schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Victoria Legger. Victoria Legger. We'll move on to our next set of speakers. We have Diane Muscovac, Matthew Cody Connor, and Kathleen Slindy.
Good evening. The three-minute excerpts that I've, that I have been reading over the last several months highlighted the need to change the hearts of people one person at a time at a young age. The only way this can be done is by putting God back in schools through history class. We need to teach children that our nation is a godly nation and was founded on godly principles. Tonight, I want to mention a few recent vile murders. Remember the murders that took place on October seven in Israel? Remember the seven-year-old little boy whose mother included him in her shooting rampage at Lakewood Church? Remember Lakin Riley who was murdered while jogging? Now, God has given everyone on this planet the innate ability to know the difference between right and wrong. All these people and countless others who've been, who have chosen to murder have one thing in common and they have chosen to sear their conscience. People who take innocent lives do not know Jesus Christ because if they did, they would choose life. Look up in the Bible verse, verse Deuteronomy thirty nineteen. In it, God gives you a quiz and he also gives you the answer to that quiz. So I would like to read the starfish story. An old man was walking on the beach one morning after a storm. In the distance, he could see someone moving like a dancer. As he came closer, he saw that it was a young woman picking up starfish and gently throwing them into the ocean. "Young lady, why are you throwing, throwing starfish into the ocean? The sun is up, the tide is going out, and if I don't throw them, they will die," she said. "But, young lady, do you realize that there are many miles of beach and thousands of starfish? You cannot possibly make a difference." The young woman listened politely, then bent down, picked up another starfish, and threw it into the sea. "It made a difference for that one," she said. There are eight point one billion people on this earth. You ask, what can we do in our little teeny tiny corner of the world, of our world, to change lives? Well, just like that one starfish out of a thousand, out of thousands, we can make a difference in the hearts of people one person at a time by teaching the godly principles our country was founded on in history class. The key is starting at a young age. God's word contains all the answers we need to live this life. Let's team up and change the hearts of children and people one person at a time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor, Kathleen Slindy, and then Darrell Clark.
Just want to make sure I get this first part right because they are direct quotes. "Local school boards may not remove books from school libraries simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books and seek by the removal to prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matter of opinion. Students do not shed their rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate. More importantly, the right to receive ideas is a necessary predicate to the recipient's meaningful exercise of their own rights of speech, press, and political freedom." Now, I don't believe for a second that many of you care about the rights and freedoms of anybody outside of yourself, but I wanted to make sure you couldn't claim ignorance to these longstanding legal precedents. Now, some of you may not know, but I'm a maintenance manager. I've made a successful career, supported a family fixing things. You could say fixing things is what I do. You also may not know that there are rules to fixing things. A code, if you will, that people who are good at fixing things abide by. Rule number one, nothing is more dangerous than ignorance. If you don't have the right tools, the right experience, you probably just make things worse. Rule number two, there is no right way to do the wrong thing. So if you're going to fix something, you fix it the right way, like fixing a budget without cutting music and arts. Rule number three, you do not fix what is not broken, which seems to be all this school board wants to do, as evidenced by your latest unneeded book policy. I never see you addressing problems that need solutions, only creating solutions that are looking for problems. In my career field, we have a name for people that do not have the right tools and experience, that do not fix things the right way and fix things that are not broken when other things are. We call them unemployed. You guys like to talk about your values a lot, so let's talk about them for a second. You think you can take baby steps down the path. You can inch your way towards fascism and nobody will notice, but I see you. I see that we have a school board that is much more worried about books being in our schools than they are about guns being in them. More focused on bathrooms and classrooms. More concerned with folks, with forcing students out to their parents than helping them get into college. And disturbingly more interested in what is in children's pants instead of what is in their minds. So you're right, we don't have the same values. I don't know if I could live with myself if we did. There's one more rule to fixing things. That's to know when something's not worth fixing. When it's time to just throw it out and replace it, like bad leadership on a school board.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, then Darrell Clark, then Kim Mayo.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, School Board Members, Doctors Robertson and staff. I'm here to speak a little bit about the budget. My name is Kathleen Slindy, I'm the President of Virginia Beach Education Association. I want to address you regarding the CION and the, and the, the CIP. I want to acknowledge first the work of Mrs. Pate, Mr. Freeman, and their respective staffs. Composing a budget in a community that strives to balance the economy of tourism and the business growth with the, also meeting the state educational unfunded mandates and then fully funding educational goals for the locals is Herculean if nothing else, right? Next, I want to remind you that as a state, Virginia has historically paid below the national average for teacher salaries. The state came closest to actually reaching the national average in nineteen eighty-nine ninety school year. And we have lost ground ever since. However, the recent General Assembly budget has the goal of reaching the national average by two, by twenty twenty-eight. And that is if the subsequent leadership embraces those same goals. Locally, you guys, the Virginia Beach schools, acting as a result of the compensation study, have increased the step scale. But still there, we remain the district with the lowest starting teacher salary here on the South Side. We do not offer the highest starting salary, we don't have the best benefit package, nor is Virginia Beach the city with the lowest cost of living. The limited number of teacher graduates from our colleges and universities and those across the state will not be coming here. They are going to gravitate toward the school divisions that are offering more. Even the Navy spouses who move here will have better options to augment their family's income. BBCBS has to do the best it possibly can to make our school division attractive to new hires and to our current employees to retain them. So some of the things that we can do that don't necessarily impact our budget would be the wellness days and personal days. These are highly valued. Also, having their professionalism valued is very important to our employees. Trusting them to do their jobs is incredibly important. The work environment that they have should be non-threatening, they should be respected. It's important for students, it's important for employees. Adding more support and mentor, mentoring for our new teachers is another way to help. It helps us recruit and retain educators and we support our professionals, our newest professionals, to become successful and stay. Also, increasing the support from our community parents is very important. It's important for our school leadership, our teachers, and our staff. It has a great impact on employee retention rates, their morale, and can help with student absenteeism and behavior issues. These are some of the non-budget, budget items to, to build on. And beyond that, of course, if funding comes, more funding comes from the state, you know that we'd like it to go to compensation. The school employees deserve the same raise the city employees are getting. In the past, that rally of do it for the children might have worked, but today, you know, it certainly can't. It's not the case today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darrell Clark, then Kim Mayo, then Jill Kane.
What's up, my name is Darrell Clark. So, last time, Mrs. Brown said something along the lines of, you know, wanting people to not attack religion. We weren't attacking religion, we were attacking Christian nationalism, which is, as one of the speakers blatantly laid out for y'all, the notion of breaching or pretty much eradicating the separation of church and state in order to put Christianity in in order to put Christianity in schools, in order to indoctrinate children with that. That's what we're attacking, not religion. Uh, just wanted to get that out the way. Yeah, so, I mean, to, it's a shame that here we are talking about budget cuts and, uh, the cutting of fine arts and music programs. I have a bunch of stuff written, but I kind of don't even want to like, I don't know, it's just... I don't understand how y'all can really lean towards cutting these programs as if they're insignificant. I'm tired of also y'all treating these kids coming up here like they're doing some sort of extra credit assignment, speaking in front of y'all. Like, this is, they're talking about their lives, talking about what's enriching, enriching their lives, and this is not, this is not a game to them, this is not like a joke, this isn't something to be taken lightly, this is serious. You know, the Attorney General wants to blame like social media for young people's, like, the, the mental health crisis or whatever, but it's not that, it's grown adults like y'all and decision-makers who are like stealing their joy. Y'all are ruining their lives, whether it be the anti-trans model policies or the book bans. And now here we are talking about the cutting of fine arts and music. It's things like this outside of what they also have to deal with, whether it be the anxiety of school shootings and whatnot, like, there's so much going on, and y'all, like, group, people like y'all are, are trying to rob them of their joys, their futures, things that they care about, and all for what? For what, an extra few dollars or something? I, I don't understand how y'all can swear that y'all are for the kids, y'all are for the children, y'all are for the students, but y'all show time and time again that you don't care. And that has to stop. I don't know what it's going to take, but it has to stop. And especially from these student-first Virginia people, y'all are the worst of the worst, and that's all I have to say.
Our next speaker is Kim Mayo, Jill Kane, and then Melinda Rogers.
Good evening. I'm alerting the public and updating your board on an admissions issue with Old Nation Visual Arts and Dance. I'm unsure if this is a citywide issue. This is a great program for gifted artists and dancers that I knew nothing about until March 2. The problem is, the deadline was in February, and many of our second grader parents at our school didn't know anything about it either, as I shared. Thank you Chair Melnick and Honorable Vicki Manning for alerting Dr. Soltner. He did apologize for emailing me incorrect information he was provided by staff on ODS programs, but stated he will not accept, he will not extend the deadline. School Board works for the public, and administration reports to Dr. Robertson, who reports to you. Our school placed one advertisement for gifted visual arts in September in our e-newsletter, buried towards the bottom of the page of a multi-page document. Can you believe it? We received robo-calls, school-wide emails, phone calls, emails, and seesaw messages. We got paper handouts on Lego Club and on ODS testing from the gifted office, ODS academic testing. Another school in contrast got paper memos and multiple communications on ODS Visual Arts and Dance, I'm told. Not our school, we're taxpayers too. It's our right as parents to have proper communication and a chance to, for our students to compete for a spot. We have kids who love fashion design, making jewelry, have AP art grades, mine won an art award at our previous school. I'm told our school recommended zero rising third graders. It's important to note, anyone is welcome to apply and give it a shot. Students who you wouldn't think are selected for a spot sometimes, and vice versa. Our school is over 60% military families. Like my husband and I, most did not attend VB schools. They had no idea these programs existed. What about students talented in dance? Our kids will get a heavy dose of Chromebook while others enjoy the creative freedom of arts and dance. Our art class is once a week for 50 minutes. ODS Visual Arts gets one entire day a week with much better resources, no comparison. When I expressed my frustration to senior management, she oversees many principals, she was icy cold and corporate. Each school does their own thing, it's not standardized. Who is responsible for communication and where is the accountability? I hope you will agree advertising these coveted programs once in an e-newsletter and somewhere on the VB school's website is not sufficient. Since administration is refusing to extend the deadline, let's share and offer comparable art and dance programs across the cities. I attended one of the best public school systems in the country on school choice, there were no gifted schools. Having a standalone school like this is not a best practice, but good communication is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jill Kane, Melinda Rogers, and then Gina Lane.
What constitutes full-time to you? What do you see as the difference between 33 kids in a required algebra class, which meets during the regular school day only, and 14 kids in a highly specialized elective as part of a much larger ensemble, which meets not only during the regular school day, but literally hundreds of additional hours on nights, weekends, holidays, and summer months? How could you possibly say that these program requirements calculate out to anything less than full-time? Does the idea of consolidating your secondary performing arts programs and reducing your staffing really fit into your entire strategic plan, your compass to 2025? But particularly in the area of Goal Six, Effective and Efficient Operations, and Goal Two, Student Well-Being? At the February 27th School Board Workshop, Dr. Robertson stated, "If you're an elective teacher, you must market your program. You must walk the hallways, you must tap kids on the shoulder, you must take your kids out and showcase them. If you do not, those kids will not choose your program." And then, on the March 1st Morning News on Wavy 10, Dr. Robertson stated, "It's just because kids are not selecting that class." Are you listening to any of the feedback you've heard on this topic? You certainly were not listening to the feedback on next year's calendar, or we would be headed for an hours-based school year and post-Labor Day start. Your responses, if any, have been to pass the buck. Our kids are choosing our programs, they are selecting our classes. They are choosing continuous, ongoing sequential music performance instruction with the classmates and teachers that they know. What they are not choosing is to have their programs placed on the chopping block because adults can't figure out how to responsibly balance a budget. So walk the hallways, tap the city council and the state on the shoulder, and you fix this. Our kids are not choosing to be the pawns in this embarrassing mess, and shame on you for putting them there. If you don't listen to me, then listen to these brave, incredible students who came out tonight to plead with you to keep their programs. Like they said they used their skills tonight that they've learned during their years spent in music ensembles. Of all things, that's what they want from you. If you go through with these cuts, you may as well just tell them you don't care. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melinda Rogers, Gina Lane, and then Catherine Harris.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Rogers, and I'm the parent to three Virginia Beach City Public School students, a former employee, and I'm running for school board. In recent weeks, I've presented before you advocating for the preservation of fine arts education within our schools. Additionally, discussions by this board have commenced regarding the implementation of pay-for-play sports. Dr. Robertson has articulated the potential of necessity for reductions in assistant principals, library media personnel, instructional technology specialists, and state and federal governments' support in the form of covert relief funds is no longer available. Although, we did just witness Ms. Franklin and Ms. Levis insisting to the news that these cuts are not due to budget, but because of student choice. Well, and before you'd express my concern regarding the apparent prioritizing of cuts regarding services vital to student welfare and enrichment, while opportunities for streamlining administrative overhead remain largely unexplored. I found that while 53% of technology budget was allocated to technology personnel last year, it remains unclear how many of these personnel directly engage with students as instructional technology specialists as opposed to serving administration, administrative functions within central offices. Conversations with staff have revealed that exhaustive list of data collection programs mandated for student and teacher tracking. These programs, including Achieve 3000, Mastery Tracker, Newzella, Gizmos, actively learn, No Red Ink, IXL, Canvas for Detail, necessitate substantial financial investment while approximating 10% of the technology budget, and it is dedicated to these services that are purchased. Given that this data is predominantly collected at the school level before being forwarded to central offices, a question naturally arises that why is there a necessity for sustaining a large administrative workforce tasked with just processing data? Other opportunities for cost-saving can be found in optimizing the resource usage. For example, I question the need for printed correspondence, like the one I received, complete with colored graphics, informing parents of absences when circumstances such as illness, as in the case of my own child who contracted COVID, are already communicated directly to the school. I'm not sure why we're putting paper and colored ink out there. There are 156 administrative titles in this division, excluding the title of principal and vice-principal. That's more titles than there are schools. It is evident that there's a plethora of avenues for which the division can exercise fiscal prudence without compromising the quality of services provided to our students. The duty of our school system is to furnish the children of our community with the resources and support required for their academic and personal growth. It is therefore incumbent upon this board that the administrative prioritize students' welfare above everything else. And with my last 20 seconds, my son just texted me as I'm sitting in this audience to tell me that he just received a $36,000 scholarship for music to George Mason because of these schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gina Lane, Catherine Harris, and then Rebecca Crossley.
Hello, my name is Gina Lane, I've been a music teacher for 25 years, with my last 10 years here in Virginia Beach. My husband has been the band director at Cox for the past 18 years. My oldest son has been in band for the past three years at Old Nation, and he'll continue next year in high school. And my youngest son is going to middle school next year, and will also be joining band. So I have a very vested interest in our fine arts programs. I was very disheartened to hear of the various cuts to different music programs across the district, including the ones at Cox. The Cox Band Program is first-class. The marching band has won numerous state championships and even a national championship. The Wind Ensemble has always received superior ratings at their state band assessment, including this past weekend. This earned the band its 15th Virginia Honor Band. This will not be sustainable by cutting the program to .6. Do you know how many hours outside of contract day a band director works? In just the first semester, my husband worked over 500 hours outside of his contract time. How is that not full-time? My husband is not an anomaly. A band director's job should not be based just on how many kids are signed up for the class. In addition to the band cuts, orchestra was cut to .6, and the chorus, which was only a .2, was eliminated. I have watched that program over the past 10 years go from a full-time position to nothing, because when you start shipping away at the music programs, that is what happens. If you want to retain high-quality teachers, you have to have full-time positions. I listened to the last school board meeting. You said the reasons for the cuts were students are not selecting these courses. We have many reasons students aren't selecting these courses. I'll speak to just a couple of them. Too many elective options at the middle school level is one issue, issue. If you're going to offer all those choices, then all middle schools should have three elective bells like ODS and Plaza. The hybrid four-by-four schedule for high school is also a challenge. You also say that music teachers are not out there recruiting for their programs or showcasing their groups. That is just simply not true. Recruitment efforts have actually ramped up over the past two years as we've come out of COVID, and music teachers at all the levels are working together to build these programs. In closing, it is inequitable for some schools to have full-time band orchestra and chorus, and others to not. It is inequitable for some schools to be able to offer a variety of music courses that other schools are not able to offer. We need to stop allowing site-based decisions for music allocations and forcing principals to make these hard decisions. All secondary schools should have a designated allocation for full-time band orchestra and chorus. These positions should not be held to the same guidelines for class minimum that other classes are, because they are a different entity. I have learned throughout my life that we make happen what we want to make happen. So, Virginia Beach, let's please do better, value the arts, and make it happen. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Catherine Harris, then Rebecca Crossley, and then Diana Howard. Catherine Harris? Rebecca Crossley?
I'm Rebecca Crossley, proud mom of two Cox marching Falcons, and, um, it's very apparent that our music programs are being affected by the current staffing formula. Um, and I'm going to ask two major things, or two main things. I think it's pretty evident, the impact that our music programs have on the students. Um, I'm very proud of the students that spoke up today. But what I'm asking for is, to mimic what, uh, Mrs. Lane said, we should have a full-time band director. We should also have some transparency on the staffing formula and how many positions it affects. And is that equitably being affected, um, in music departments across the city versus, you know? I wrote down here, Cox High School is the one I know about. We have 13 science teachers, 12 English teachers, 14 math teachers, one band, one band director. Why should he be cut from a full-time position where he works twice as many hours as most teachers in a school year to a .6? That just doesn't make sense. It will affect our kids tremendously. February 23rd, teachers were notified of these allocations based on enrollment. They are not based on enrollment. Our kids are demanding these classes, and they aren't being offered. I forwarded an email just this afternoon from a Cox High School counselor. Music theory is not being offered, even though our kids are asking for it. It is not because these teachers have not got the enrollment or the numbers. And even if they don't have the enrollment that supports 14 science teachers, these programs are critical. So we're asking, we're begging for your protection, and it shouldn't be up to the principals. The principals, some principals value the music programs. They don't cut the band director, even if the enrollment is down. We should have one full-time band director and choral instructor and orchestra instructor. Please listen to our kids, they need these programs. They crave them, and they want to go into music careers. We should support that. We need to support our kids. Thank you.
Just as a note, that Speaker Levin had to cancel, so we're going to move on to Diana Howard, and then Elise Gogden.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Diana Howard, and I'm the Chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and it is unfortunate that everybody didn't watch the informal session that you're not cutting music programs. We would have had a lot less speakers here tonight. So, um, but I was, uh, interested that you are going to be consolidating classes where there are less than, you know, a few students in it, which seems to me only prudent. Be a waste of money to have teachers teaching when there's only a couple of students in the school, in those classes, and consolidating them, but not getting rid of those classes. So, um, but I did want to bring up that there are probably a lot of things that you can cut in the budgets, a lot of things that you probably didn't even mention during the informal session. So, um, things you could, you know, cut would be not increasing, um, schools at 60% of their size when you create new ones, and not wasting money on, uh, what do you call it? The, the initial drafts of building schools that we can't afford to build, and putting that money into maintaining the schools we have, and maybe building schools more efficiently and, um, making them, um, more directed towards education and not towards, um, structural things that are going to make it like a colossal thing, so, and waste money. So, your job is to be prudent with the taxpayers' money. And I want to like also show you that everybody should have got this. This is your real estate assessment. I'm sure you all got one. This says that they are going to raise our taxes on our real estate, right? Raise them. So our assessments went up, that's not money in our pocket. My, my housing property increases in value, but I don't have that money to spend. But you're gonna, it's not you, the city council, is gonna increase my taxes so that I can pay more money. That's not more money I earned, I'm not getting that. I'm not getting that in increased social security or increased pay at, you know, a job I work or anything like that. That's just more money I have to spend. I don't know, I was at my CAC meeting at the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Commission, and there was a lady there speaking, and in Hampton Roads, the cost of housing has gone up 68% in Hampton Roads. The rent has gone up 300 a month. That is ridiculous. Somebody needs to be concerned about the taxpayers and how much we can actually pay you. We can't every year give you more money out of pocket. We all have our prices going up as well. Somebody should be concerned about that and stop increasing our taxes and learn to decrease the cost of government on us.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Elise Congdon.
Good evening, Board. My name is Alexis Congdon, and I am a parent of two teenagers. One is a seventh grader at Great Neck Middle, and another is a freshman at Cox High School. Both are honorable, both are respectful, and cheerfully attend school. Both adore music. Up until this point, there hasn't been an issue I have felt the need to engage. I'm very, very pleased with being in this school district. I moved out of Norfolk to be in this school district. This is the first meeting I have ever exercised my voice in, my concern matching most that have already spoken, the risk of losing fine arts in our school with the proposed budget cuts. This past week, I found myself in front of city council, talking with other parents and now talking to you, trying to advocate for my kids and for their dedicated teachers. Before coming tonight, I did pull up the rough draft of the proposed budget. I'd like to clarify before I go on, though. I am not seeing on the list of staff cuts, I'm not seeing any fine art positions. I see secondary assistants, secondary assistant principals, library media assistants, instructional tech specialists, tech support technicians, and an 8.5 cut to central office positions. My question is, did you hear us and revise what's being cut? So if that's not the case, can we be transparent and really let our community know what's at risk with these budget cuts? If our band director, Mr. Lane, is still at risk of losing his full-time position, I'd love to give you a perspective that will hopefully change it. Last Saturday, as we were waiting for load buses and make our way to district assessment, a parent who is also a Virginia Beach educator shared with me how hard it is to get through a lesson without multiple interruptions. She even brought a clicker to class. She counted in one class 54 interruptions, a growing disrespect on both sides. That's not what's happening in Mr. Lane classrooms. He doesn't have to raise his voice. He doesn't have to demand respect because he earns it. For 18 years, he has served this school, 19, Virginia Beach. Some years, the number's bigger than others, but every year, no matter the size, they earn superior ratings and represent our city very well. Maybe instead of cutting his hours, we award him with more opportunities to impact more of these teens trying so hard to navigate adolescence. Maybe instead of more avid classes, we give these kids, we give these kids grow, we give these kids a chance to grow, connect, and become through creativity. Maybe banging on a drum is really what they need instead of another avid class. Please hear our plea. Do not let this music hallway go dark. Let's rethink and advocate for our students and established staff. Let's go to the city and demand more funds and properly support our schools. Let's revisit the SOQ formula. The current one drastically underestimates the current needs. Revising it could be essential to bridge this financial gap. These kids are our future. They deserve the time and the investment. Put students first, seek growth, be open to change, do great work, and value these differences.
We're going to move on to our online speaker, Suzanne Saltizziak. Please unmute.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Saltizziak, a graduate of Salem High School, a parent of children in the schools, and a taxpayer in Virginia Beach. I come here to speak about cuts to the art programs. And no, you're not saying they're cuts. You're saying students aren't taking them. But you're only sharing selective information. You raised the floor of how many students were needed to take them. Why did you raise the floor to the arts programs? There's only 20 students in my son's Spanish four class. How many are in the AP Japanese class at some schools? Why are the arts classes, the ones that are targeted to the point that it is obliterating programs at some schools? When I was a military kid moving around, schools were a huge part of how they determined where we moved, as they are for many families. When I was nine, my father was transferred to Lemoore in California. And while we lived there, he traveled an hour each way to work because they didn't want us to be in a school without arts programs, and the ones nearby did, didn't have them. Thankfully, they did that because I got one of the lead roles in my sixth grade play, went on to participate in Salem High School's Elite Drama Exposed program, an award-winning chorus and marching band. My own kids have not had that experience. You see, my daughter loved chorus in sixth grade. She's actually asking to take voice lessons now because she can't fit it into her schedule. But she only had one elective in middle school when it hit seventh and eighth grade. She had to choose between a language and the arts. Ultimately, she had to choose what would help her get into an academy. But she still misses chorus, and the program she participated in is now extinct. My son wanted to go to the MSA at Ocean Lakes, so he felt like with his one elective in seventh and eighth that he had to pursue a language as well, even though he loved drawing. The arts are core classes that provide as many long-term skills as the three Rs. I use many of my, many more of my drama skills in my adult career than I ever use of that chemistry class. I can't even remember to help my son do his homework. As such, I propose that the policy committee consider a policy that mandates each high school and middle school have a program for orchestra, band, chorus, art, and drama. I've also proposed that that policy mandate consideration of external program expectations, such as marching bands, school musicals, art shows, plays, to be considered a part of the position rather than extra, and for those to be considered full-time positions with different standards for consideration of how those classes are included in allocations. While these programs are as imperative as the core classes, they are not the same and should not be counted in the same way. And this time, I don't think I'm going to have to organize like I did the recess moms. Y'all already see, the families and students are organizing themselves. It's not going to go away. We need to, we need to understand what our community wants. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, the online speaker number two is not online, so we are done with our speakers for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the information portion of our agenda, we will begin with textbook adoption, four and five elementary language arts. And we welcome Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Lorena Kelly, and I serve as Elementary Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. I am here with our elementary language arts coordinator, Carrie Hall. We will provide you with information regarding the core literacy textbook adoption for fourth and fifth grade. The textbooks selected must be implemented in the fall of 2024. Mrs. Calucci shared with you a detailed explanation of the Virginia Literacy Act during the January 27th school board meeting. When we presented the core literacy program for K-3, additionally, she shared some information this evening during the all-in presentation. This is a reminder that the textbook adoption is a requirement of the Virginia Literacy Act. Sorry, this isn't changing. Okay, thank you. Here we go. Thank you. As we've shared during the K-3 presentation, Virginia's school divisions are limited to the approved resources provided by the Virginia Department of Education, which means we are unable to consider Open Educational Resources, or OERs, to support the school division with a quick turnaround to implement this fall. You are aware that the Virginia Department of Ed provided us resources to help us make our choices. Our committee then took, our committee then reviewed all of the options provided by the Virginia Department of Ed and recommended their top two choices. The top two choices have been made available in the school administration building and the central library and in all of our schools. The selection committee reviewed a summary of public comment, and we are here tonight to share the committee's recommendation and request your approval. The top two state-approved textbooks identified by the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Curriculum Committee for grades four and five are Benchmark Advanced and HMH Hoop to Mifflin-Harcourt into Reading, which should be familiar to you because they were the same top two choices for K-3. Allow me to share what the committee identified as strengths of each. The strengths of Benchmark Advanced noted by the committee, where the program provides a wide bank of resources resulting in strong support for teachers, specifically novice teachers through an online portal, video resources, teacher language, and rationale. Materials cover a range of science and social studies topics to support content knowledge development and themes repeat each year, providing students with the opportunity to review previous skills and content while allowing them to increase their knowledge base. And the program provides clear guidance for using assessment data to inform instruction. The strengths of HMH into Reading provided by the committee were, the program provides a wide bank of resources resulting in dynamic resources that include literacy center guidance and printable literacy center resources. The modules or units include texts that are high-quality, engaging, and appropriately complex to develop reading skills, vocabulary, comprehension, background knowledge, and writing. And content is structured with themes and topics through connected texts, and students have opportunities to interact with and apply vocabulary. They also have chances for writing applications across many genres. Approximately 160 responses with feedback were submitted in public comment. The committee carefully reviewed a summary of public comments, textbook costs, and noted a few key differences. While differentiation was noted in both programs, respondents shared that the level of support was a strength for HMH into Reading. While both textbooks included an abundance of resources, respondents found a greater ease of navigating these with HMH into Reading. The respondents were clearly in favor of adopting the textbook that aligns with K-3. Both textbooks offered engaging, high-quality student materials, but respondents preferred the access to novels and chapter books in grades four and five. Now we will examine the cost of each. The initial cost of Benchmark for grades four and five for approximately 9,400 students was quoted at $1,660,210. The total implementation cost is included on the slides. The initial cost of HMH into Reading for 9,400 students in grades four and five for HMH into Reading is $924,020. Again, the total implementation cost is listed on the slide. As we noted, we received approximately 160 respondents. Based on the responses, HMH received higher ratings in all four categories included in the survey: educational significance, support and utility, usability, and navigation and layout. During the final textbook adoption committee meeting, the committee reviewed a summary of public comments, the textbook costs, and they came to consensus on the recommendation of HMH into Reading for four and five. This is a reminder that Mrs. Calucci shared information regarding funding during a previous school board presentation and again, as reviewed in the all-in presentation. You may recall that our division received approximately 20 million for the Virginia all-in funding from the state, and Virginia Beach has allocated approximately 4 million in the spending plan that was approved by the state. Out of that, 3.5 million was budgeted for the VLA K-3 and IV, V core adoption, and 440 was budgeted for supplemental materials for K-8. Our goal is to use the VLA funding for the 2024 school year to cover the initial cost of implementation, to ensure materials are received no later than May, to provide teachers the opportunity to have these resources prior to summer break. Thank you for your consideration of the committee's recommendations. We thank the elementary language arts team and the curriculum committee members for dedicating their time in completing a thoughtful analysis to recommend the best textbook for our students and teachers. We will join you at the next school board meeting with these books on the consent agenda. And I welcome any questions.
Okay, so this is a digital resource or?
It's a combination. There is digital access, and there's also print access.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that we're going to have a print access book because, as you know, our students have differing needs, and so I just want to make sure we're providing that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nobody else?
Just, just that the funds are coming from the state, right?
They are coming from the all-in funding.
Right, okay. So it's not an unfunded mandate. I would be interested, I mean, in knowing, after all of the school divisions select their books, the percentage of school districts that chose this particular book. Think, think we'll know that? Okay. I bet you are.
Okay. All right, thank you. Nobody else? Okay. Now we move on to new course, English 10 AP Seminar. Welcome, Thomas Quinn, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. I am here this evening to provide you with information regarding a proposed new course, English 10 AP Seminar, to be implemented during the 24-25 school year. In the spring of 2023, the Virginia Department of Education approved the College Board Advanced Placement Seminar course to be a substitute for English 10. This means students may take AP Seminar to fill their one-credit English 10 requirement. Seven years prior, in 2017, the Virginia Beach City Public School Board approved AP Seminar as an additional advanced coursework option for students. By approving this course, grade 10 students will have three options to fulfill their credit requirements just as their counterparts do in grade 11. This offering also aligns with Goal One, Strategy Four of our strategic framework, increasing student access and opportunity for advanced-level coursework. English 10 AP Seminar will be a year-long one-credit course. No additional staffing will be required, and teachers will use existing secondary English resources and curriculum provided by the College Board. The only expense will be to train teachers in AP Seminar, yet many of our high schools already have teachers who have completed this requirement. English 10 AP Seminar is a comprehensive year-long course focused on owning student skills through cross-curricular discussions and explorations of world, real-world topics. Throughout the program, students acquire the ability to synthesize information, craft research-based essays, and design and deliver presentations to demonstrate their learning. The course culminates with a three-part assessment. Part one is a team project and presentation that requires about 20% of their evaluation. Two is the individual research-based essay and presentation, which accounts for 35%. And part three is the end-of-course exam, which accumulates 45% of their final grade, consisting of three short-answer questions and one essay. The structure of this course is designed to foster future-ready skills essential for the post-secondary options of enrollment, enlistment, and employment. In addition to the objectives outlined in the AP Seminar curriculum, all English 10 standards will be included. You can view the alignment on this slide, and I'll give you a moment to read it to yourself. I was waiting for you guys to look up. Sorry, teacher moment. The benefit of approving this course is to ready students for the future rigorous courses they may encounter during their junior and senior year. Students looking to accelerate their learning, such as those in our avid system, now have an additional opportunity to engage in college-level coursework during their sophomore year. This also provides a This also provides additional AP access to academy students who find limited space in their schedule during their junior and senior year because of academy requirements. The equitable access to this course ensures the opportunity to experience rigor and research is available to all students, best preparing them for the challenges of the future. I thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Okay, Ms. Franklin.
Thank you for presenting tonight. So I've got to ask, because, you know, I'm a huge fan of student offerings and, you know, giving them as many options as we can in our, in our division. I think that's what separates us from other divisions. However, of course, we have to talk about unintended consequences, right? So we, we have had so many speakers come to us and say, "The problem is that we don't have enough time for electives. The problem is that we don't have enough, or we have too many options potentially available to the students." And that's why, you know, this might say, "Well, let's say you're an honor student who feels like this course could be very helpful. However, now I've got to choose between music and arts and, and this course." So I guess, I'm just curious, based on the feedback that we've heard tonight. You know, I'm not even gonna tell you how long it's been since I've been in schools, but, you know, music and art, I would, you know, I was part of chorus, I played piano, I, you know, did all of that. So I understand how important that is to a student's whole, holistic, I guess, experience, you know, attending school. So I, I'm just curious how, in your opinion, as an educator, is this, is this going to be something that, again, is going to pull away from the possibility of them being able to participate? I'm just curious, since we've heard so much feedback tonight about that topic.
Easy, I can say is no. It replaces their English offering. So you would sign up for English, math, science, you know, history as your four core classes. This just gives you a different option for that English requirement.
Okay, so it will not impact any of the speakers?
It is not gonna touch the electives, it will not touch band, orchestra, chorus, nobody.
Okay, well, I think that's fair, thank you very much.
Ms. Manning? So it's been a couple of years since my boys were in this, these classes, but I really feel like they took a seminar course already. Do we have, do we currently offer a seminar course in 11th grade?
The 11th to 12th, yes ma'am.
Okay.
It's the, uh...
So, so the list here isn't everything that we offer, this?
Uh, the AP Language would be your grade 11, and then your AP Lit would be the 12. And you can pursue the capstone degree. I only spent three years teaching the high school level, so I do have my coordinator with me if you need additional information. She would be the best person to ask for that one.
So, yeah, so I just, I mean, so could a student who's advanced in English in 10th grade take AP Lang? Is, is that an option?
AP Language is typically offered in 11th grade. What, by replacing the AP, actually, by replacing English 10 with AP Seminar, students are able to get ahead and start working on that, that coursework before their junior year. Like Mr. Quinn said, AP Seminar and AP Research is offered right now as an English elective.
Okay, that's with AP, that, they took seminar and research?
Yes, and that allows them, if they take those two classes, as well as four additional AP courses, they can get the capstone diploma through the college board.
So, so couldn't they already take those, like, the AP Seminar and Research in 10th grade, like, starting in 10th grade?
It's offered in 11th grade and 12th grade, right now. So what, what this is allowing students to do is to have more opportunity. By starting the AP Seminar and replacing English 10 with AP Seminar, what they can do is they can have more room in their schedule to get this, a capstone diploma, should they choose, and still be able to take a longer elective.
Okay, so this is helping them get the capstone diploma?
Correct.
Okay.
I can give you an example, at Bayside High School and the Health Sciences Academy, they're planning, they would like to use this course as their 10th-grade English class for academy students, because right now their students have so many requirements, it's hard for them to get that capstone diploma. So they're hoping to use this, so those students can, can attain it. So really, it's giving them more, more access, and the, the standards do align.
Okay, great. And then what will be the cost to add this program?
The only, the only cost is to train the teachers. Right now, we have five teacher, five schools that have trained teachers and six that do not. This will be optional for high schools to offer, they will not have to offer it. It will be up to whether or not they have students and enough students to enroll in it. So that is, that is the only cost is to train the teachers. The reason they must get trained in this course is because they score part of the assessment, which Mr. Quinn over in the presentation, so they have to get trained.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
So I, I was thinking along the lines that Ms. Franklin was going on, too. So you sort of answered just now that some of the high schools may not offer this because they may not have a trained teacher this coming fall. They might get one over the summer, but they might not. How many students would it take to make this class? Seventeen, is that correct? Just like electives, okay. I, I certainly wouldn't want a student to not be able to, after what we've heard in the last two, three weeks, I don't want a student to have to choose to take this over an elective, but you're saying that this won't interfere with electives at all?
Nope.
However, it's still a teacher that might get a spot in that school over a band director who's not full-time.
No, it's an English class, it's a sharing English class.
I get it, I get it, but when it comes to cutting teachers, they have to cut them somewhere, so, you know. What is the cost to train?
Yeah, $1,200.
Per teacher or just?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are, are you offering classes this summer?
We've...
Right, so as the, the, the schools will let us know who they have, who they would like to be trained, and we usually train them over the summer. It's a one-week class, and it all depends on interest. So it depends on if they submit those names for, for training, so. We're kind of on a wait-and-see basis right now. But we know that we have six schools that do not have them, five that already do, so.
Okay. Do you know what's, what those schools are already?
Yes, the schools that have teachers that are already trained in AP Seminar are Landstown High School, Kellum, Green Run, they actually have two, Bayside High School has two, and Cox has one.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Brown?
Great, so Ms. Anderson asked one of my questions, which was how much the training is. I think that we know there's a variance sometimes for those trainings, so I appreciate having that exact number. At this current time, is there any 10th-grade AP English offering or no?
Not at this time, no. In other content areas, there are.
Okay, so this would be another AP offering at the 10th-grade level in place of English?
Correct. It would just have an option between English nine, or English 10, honors 10, AP 10.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next is Career Strategy Seminar. Welcome, Dr. Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Development.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. I'm here this evening to provide you with information regarding the proposal for an internship and transition course for our oldest students. The proposed course for your consideration is Career Strategy Seminar. This one-credit elective course for juniors and seniors was requested by multiple high school principals and academy coordinators to structure the capstone internship experience and help students further develop their leadership and workplace skills. It builds on the skills gained from sophomore-level service learning projects, academy electives, and current technical course sequences. Enrolled students will hone their leadership skills and develop self-reliance, while they investigate how lived experiences influence, influence career decisions and build a five-year adult transition plan to ensure they're successfully enrolled and listed or employed after high school. The course is divided into four units. The first is Review of Career Exploration. This unit revisits the student's academic and career planning journey, evaluates progress, and prepares students for their next steps. The next is Leadership Development. The second unit focuses on leadership development as students hone workplace readiness skills such as business communication, interviewing, and building their professional network. Third, we see the internship unit. This is the heart of the course and focuses on the internship experience itself. Students will seek out an internship placement, create a training plan with their host employer, begin work, and be evaluated in their new internship role. The final unit is an exhibition of learning and the transition plan. This final unit focuses on synthesizing what students have learned into a transition plan to reach their desired career goals post-graduation. This includes goals to be employed, enlisted, and enrolled. The proposed Career Strategy Seminar course can be taught as a year-long elective or on a four-by-four schedule, and there is no budget impact for the course as it uses existing staffing and resources. I appreciate your consideration of the offering, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, oh, Ms. Weems?
Yes, so you said current staffing. Who, refresh my memory of who actually will be teaching this, though?
So at, at this time, we're, we currently have a really similar course at the Legal Studies Academy and the EBA, and those teachers are already in place. This is kind of bringing some of those different electives under one umbrella of one course name, reporting on the same course code, and kind of bringing that structure together. We've also had requests from high schools, Tallwood High School in particular, that would like to have this internship experience. So for staffing for those, the principals have identified them inside their staffing schedule, and whether they offer or not will depend on, you know, whether that staffing is available. There, there's not a requirement for any school to offer it.
Okay, so just if the...
So there's no additional allocation for it?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Nobody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And C, under Information, is the Proposed Fiscal Year 2425 School Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program, otherwise known as CIP. Welcome, Crystal Pate, Chief Financial Officer.
So, good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. This presentation will be the same presentation you heard earlier in workshop. We are doing this for the formal meeting. The presentation is to update you on the most recent recommendations, the fiscal year 202425 operating budget and six-year CIP program. We are scheduled to bring to the school board in our formal meeting action two resolutions for school board approval, one on the 202425 operating budget and one on the six-year CIP program. The agenda for the presentation is shown on this slide. We will go over the revised administrative recommendations for city council's proposed two-cent reduction in the real estate tax rate. The House and Senate did reach an agreement Thursday on the budget. I will provide you with additional information we have received on the state budget. I will then review the proposed final 202425 operating budget, and then turn the presentation back over to Mr. Freeman, who will review the proposed 202425 through 202930 CIP plan. So we have been working to provide the school board administration's recommendations to balance the budget for the two-cent real estate tax cut requested by city council, which results in a net loss in revenue of approximately $5.7 million. The next two slides contain some information we previously shared with you, and then some new information that was based on the feedback from Tuesday, last Tuesday's workshop. Should the city council not adopt a tax cut, then these items may be reinstated or not implemented as noted. The information on this slide to cover a one-cent reduction remains unchanged from prior presentations. I will let you review this slide for a moment to reacquaint yourselves with administration's recommendations to cover this loss in funding. The first two lines on this slide remain, remain from the prior presentations, with the exception of the cuts to TEA's, which reduced from $725,000 to $546,023. Based on feedback from the board, we did remove the pay-to-play recommendation. Revised recommendations to balance the additional one-cent cut in real estate tax rate included a cut to Unified Insights of $198,772. Unified Insights is a fully comprehensive analytics platform with actionable insights across all key aspects of school and district operations. The platform allows school-based staff and district administrators access to a dashboard of data points from attendance to grade performance and graduation rates. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has other platforms available that can provide this information. We are also recommending additional staff cuts to include four secondary assistant principals, three library media assistants, one instructional technology specialist, and one technology support technician, for a total of $789,630. And we increased the number of central office positions to be cut from 7.5 to 8.5 for a total of $664,117. Of note, no staff will lose their current job, as we will meet these cuts through normal attrition. The additional position we added to be cut from central office will be in the Department of Technology, and similar to what I just mentioned, that no staff is losing their job on the central office side, we will meet these cuts also through normal attrition. Moving on to the state budget update. So as I mentioned, the House and Senate did come to an agreement on Thursday regarding the budget. We are still awaiting a CAAT tool from the Virginia Department of Education. For education, General Assembly did provide raises of 3% in each year for teachers, and that's the SOQ positions, and they removed the one-time bonus that was proposed by the governor. They are committed to ensuring that Virginia's teachers' pay will be above other states by the end of the next biennium. In addition, they agreed to backfill the revenue loss from the elimination of the sales tax on food for human consumption and essential personnel hygiene products for Virginia Beach City Public Schools that could amount to approximately $5.8 million. They also provided funding for other important programs, including at-risk and English language learners. Also included was the expansion of the sales tax base to include digital products and services. Sales tax distributions reduce the state's share of basic aid funding, which in turn will reduce our share of basic aid funding based on our composite index, so it's not a one-for-one reduction, but it will be based on our composite index. We are also expected to see $500,000 in the first year and $250,000 in the second year to support the establishment of a recovery stool, recovery school for students residing in Region Two. Virginia Beach City Public Schools shall submit a report regarding the planning, implementation, and outcomes of the recovery high school to the chairs of the House Appropriations Committee and Senate Finance Committee and Appropriations Committee by December 1st of each year. They also adjusted the group life insurance rate from 1.34% to 1.18%, which is the actual ARIEL rate approved by the Virginia Retirement System Board, and this will be a savings to Virginia Beach City Public Schools of approximately $800,000. There are also some smaller technical adjustments. Overall, we believe we'll see an additional $13 to $16 million when we receive the CAAT tool from the Virginia Department of Education. So we had previously noted, some, the slide shows additional items to consider with the funding from the state. We have shared with you at the last meeting that we were looking at the need of additional $11.8 million in order to compensate staff an average of 3%. If funding is provided over the $11.8 million, we can review the elimination of planned cuts or reductions that we made to balance the C on, or we could look at the feasibility of implementing one of the options proposed by Siegel for a higher compensation rate to staff, or that we can also consider any other ideas that the school board may have. So this slide shows our proposed fiscal year 202425 operating budget, including the net impact of the two-cent cut in the real estate tax rate. There's no difference at the top of the slide, which is our revenue sources. You see where we started with the C on, with overall revenues of $954.5 million. We factored in the loss of revenue based on a two-cent tax reduction of approximately $5.7 million, reducing the overall revenue to, revenue to $948.8 million. And if you recall, the $5.7 million net loss in revenue is comprised of the estimated reduction of the two-cent, which was $7.2 million. Then the city budget staff also revised the revenue-sharing formula for our local contribution, so they were estimating we receive an additional $1.5 million, so the net of those two figures gives you the $5.7 million we're trying, we're actually reducing. At the bottom of the slide are the items we used to balance. These are the same items that I mentioned earlier, and were listed on the slides for one-cent and two-cent reduction. So you can see at the bottom the cut for the Unified Insight, and also listed are the staff cuts that I covered earlier. So what is next? We, again, we will be asking for your approval this evening for the 2024 operating budget and six-year CIP plan during the action section of the formal meeting. On March 26, we are scheduled to present the budget to city council. On March 26th, we are scheduled to present the budget to City Council. State budget has gone to the governor for his consideration and action. The Assembly is scheduled to reconvene on April 17th to consider any of the governor's vetoes and/or proposed amendments to legislation. Any additional funding from the state will result in doing an amendment to the approved budget and bringing that back to the School Board for approval, and then back to City Council. So, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'd be happy to ask, take any questions at this time before we turn over, uh, the presentation to Mr. Freeman.
Ms. Anderson.
Hit it already. So, we heard again tonight that the chorus class at Cox High School was eliminated, and yet we're being told that it was not eliminated. We also heard tonight that the, that the award-winning band at Cox High School, which is nationally recognized almost, has how many times they've won state recognition, that their band director is also not full-time. I don't understand at all and still cannot comprehend why we're being told these things. I'm being told that they're not eliminated, the chorus class was not eliminated. I'm also being told that nobody's losing their job. However, the band director at Cox has been there 18 years as a full-time band director, and all of a sudden, he's being told that he's a point, I believe, .6 or .8? .6, okay. So, the thing of it is, is that when you have such a program that is award-winning statewide, it is, it is something that we need to be so proud of that we wouldn't touch it. I just don't understand it, and I'm not happy. If this is what's really happening, I need to know the truth. Is that a site-based decision? I, I'm not happy over the fact that, that this band director position, and it's not just Cox, I live in the Cox District, it's not just Cox, but, but it, this is just an example of site-based decision-making that is happening throughout our division, has happened for years and years and years, and we're just told, well, you know, this is the way it is because we don't have the money to go forth, but we're, and, and, and I, I agree, I mean, I, 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 you know, I see that you've made other adjustments, but I'd like to see further adjustments for, for, you know, for a band that is, and we're going to eliminate Cox Chorus? There are 20 students, however, that have signed up for that class, I was told, so maybe that's not true, maybe we're not going to lose the chorus there. But the band director at Cox, we heard tonight that he had over 500 hours that he's done after school, that he did just last fall. He's, he's a full-time director, whether we like it or not, because he, that's the way he is, and he's getting results. So, I, I, I just need to know the truth about this, the whole matter. Can you just explain it, you or Dr. Robertson?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
So, I recognize that this is an emotional topic for staff, and I want to, before I answer the question, I, I want to say this to you. Every year, we have a high school JV team that doesn't make, because they don't have enough players. It happens regularly with JV softball, it happens regularly with JV field hockey. The team does not have enough players to make. So, they, even though there are players who want to play those sports, there are not enough players to play the sport, you can't make the team. It happens at the middle school level, where there's not enough players to make, to, to fill the team, so you, you don't have a football team at Virginia Beach Middle. You guys have heard that. We are not denying, we are not cutting football. We are not cutting JV field hockey, we are not cutting JV softball. But if you don't have enough players, you can't fill the team. So, I will say that. I'll also share, we, we shared last week, that we shared an example of a high school that, because of enrollment, lost teachers in English, Social Studies, Science, Math, and Electives. We have staffing guidelines that have not changed, and this dictates what we do. And in these staffing guidelines, it clearly says, "Electives, class size minimum, 17. Class size average, 28 with no class higher than 30. Band and chorus, 38 to 1 average on all sections. Other electives, 28 to 1." There is a program that you just mentioned, Chorus, has 20 students enrolled at Cox, that kept, Chorus is made, they are looking for an instructor. Um, at Cox right now, there are 71 students in the band, and according to these ratios, 71 students could be two classes, because you can do 38 to 1. They have three classes, that's a .6. Every single coach in this division gets a supplement for the work they do outside to support their team. As a wrestling coach, I made $2,200, and I probably worked 1,000 hours during the season for that $2,200. Our band directors, the marching band director gets a $3,600 stipend, then there are stipends beyond that. So, they get compensated for the time that they put in. I will tell you, they don't get compensated enough, because they pour their heart and soul into it, and I understand that. But as a principal, when you've given, when you've been given a set of allocations based upon budget, you have to decide, am I going to run 71 band kids in five classes? Because those classes will not meet the floor in any of those classes. How do you do that? Walk right around the corner to a class of English, an English class with, whose teachers has six classes and could have 150 kids, and say that you are making a prudent decision as a principal of the building with limited resources? We have heard that we are cutting programs. We are not cutting anything. If the, and you guys all, I sent you the numbers a week ago. You could look through the numbers, and it shows very clearly, there are programs thriving in the music program, in the fine arts program, and then there are some programs struggling. I am sorry. Now, if this board wants us to staff people who have 71 kids that's full-time, I need that direction. Otherwise, I'm going to follow the guidelines established by the board, based on the standards of quality, to staff our schools. And I am sorry that there are two or three schools that are struggling with enrollment. I, I don't know what I can do about that. I certainly am not going to, um, blame a principal for site-based decision-making when they're doing exactly what we've asked them to do. And if this board decides that with additional money, they want to bring that 21.75 ratio back down to 21.25, outstanding, we'll push those allocations back out. But it's not going to change the fact, if you have 71 kids, you still only have three sections. So, I, that's kind of where we are.
Thank you for that explanation. Well, it doesn't make me feel better, but at least I'm understanding it more clearly.
Well, make it clear, Ms. Anderson, I really appreciate the question, because none of us feel bad about it either. But it, I, I, I don't know what to do about it. I, I don't know what to do about it.
I kind of agree. I know that, that it would take money to do it, but I kind of agree with some of our speakers who said tonight that, you know, a band director in a high school, even if it's only 70-some in the, you know, they should be, really be considered full-time because of the amount of time it takes them to, to bring forth, um, you know, what they have to do with the marching band, and then they have the symphonic band, et cetera. I can just tell you that, you know, I was in the band in high school, and I, my band director, through instrumental music, forced me to get better on the clarinet. And, and because of that, when I got to college, I had the opportunity to join the Symphony Band in college. I never thought I'd be able to do that, but, um, but what I would learn through music itself really enhanced me throughout my life, so, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, please, Ms. Brown. Oh, Ms. Manning, I'm sorry. It's all the one.
Thank you. Um, so, one of the issues that we have here, and I think you mentioned it earlier, Dr. Robertson, is we have a reduction in enrollment across the division of 700 students. Is that accurate?
Uh, secondary level, I think it's like 250 at middle school, maybe 450 at high school. Does that sound right?
Okay. So, that's, those are at the secondary level. And it's my understanding that Cox specifically has, um, a, a pretty significant drop in enrollment compared to other schools.
Yeah, it's, it's been pretty significant over, and when we look at the Building Utilization Committee projections, it's dropping even lower below, we're in the 1,500 range, if you think back three or four years ago, there were 1,800, 1,900 students, they were in Group Six. So, we have seen that at Cox, but I'll use the other example, at Kempsville, we're now at nearly 2,000 students, where if you call five years ago, they were going towards 1,400 and wondering if they were going to go lower. So, we've had to shift some focus based on those numbers.
Right. And, I mean, one of the reasons is Cox is only one of, one of only two schools in our, one of only two high schools in our district that doesn't have an academy. So, it pulls a lot of students away from there. Um, so I think that, I, I would like to ask that we look at the building utilization of that, Mr. Culpepper, if we can take a look at that, um, because I, I know it's been significantly declining over the last several years. Um, and I'm going to go ahead and make my comments now, rather than during the action time, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Robertson, and Ms. Pate, for all your hard work on the, on the budget. This is the most transparent budget process I've been through since I've been on the School Board. And, you know, there were times when I would ask for line items, and I was told that that's not possible. This time, not only did I get line items, but I asked for details about those line items and got them, and, um, every question I asked was thoroughly answered. Um, I, you, you listened to my concerns and, and not only listened to them, but took action, um, and gave me answers on those. So, I just wanted to, to really highlight that, and thank you so much for valuing everybody's opinion in this process. And now, I want to throw out my priorities if we do get, um, extra money, and I know that we'll be talking about this later, but, um, the staffing ratios are a concern to me, that we increase the staffing ratios, and I understand that we had to, but I think that that should be a priority if we get funding back. Um, staffing ratios, that, that also means our class sizes are larger, and, um, I, I'm not happy about that at all. So, I, that is my number-one priority, if we get extra funding. And, and second, we've been hearing over and over again, the CIP ship is sinking. So, my second priority is, is CIP funding. So, thank you so much.
Ms. Brown.
Okay. So, um, I had a lot of questions the last meeting about music and arts, and the reason is, is I think that music and fine arts are very, very important. I think there's a lot of really great, um, life skills, um, and perseverance, um, think that the, these types of things, uh, keep our students focused on other, uh, things instead of getting into trouble, and so I, I absolutely support music and arts. And I just, I wanted to make sure that I said that. But I have gotten, and I've heard some comments, and I've gotten some emails, and last meeting, I asked Dr. Robertson about some courses. So, my first, um, question for Dr. Robertson would be, um, last week, there was a, uh, high school that was not going to make for theater, and you shared an update with the board about that. Would you mind sharing that with the community, please?
Yeah, so we had a high school that was, theater was not going to make, and we are working with the Department of Teaching and Learning and, and that fine arts area in that high school to help that enrollment build and work with that teacher this year so they can at least have one section of theater, with the understanding that, uh, the expectation is that course will need to have 17 students enrolled in '25, '26, or it's not going to make.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and so, has the division raised the floor for, um, fine arts, any, in music, fine arts, any differently than other electives?
No.
Is the floor different than last year?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, and you know, one of the things I actually thought about, and just to kind of piggyback on, um, Ms. Manning's comments about how Cox does not have an academy, um, and this is more of a pondering, I am curious how some of the academies are affecting the ability to get that enrollment, um, in some of these courses. You know, we have the, um, the, the Arts Academy at Salem High School, Governor's School of Arts, um, and there's very rigorous program offerings, and what I do notice when we were looking at some of these offerings, um, it tends to be some of the more advanced classes that seem to be really, um, I, I don't know that I want to say struggling, but, um, it seems to me that maybe some of these students are going to the academy, and so I think, um, I'm not saying that we should get rid of the academies, um, so, I don't want anybody to quote me there saying that. Um, but I do think that there's some conversations to be had there as to, um, which classes are really academy classes and which classes we're going to offer in comprehensive settings, because some of the offerings are, are, um, pretty advanced, um, and, and I support that, and I want as much opportunity as possible, but, um, and I am going to make my, um, budget comments. I, I am going to support the budget. Um, it's been a, um, difficult budget this year, um, and I do think that Dr. Robertson has done a good job of being transparent. Um, there's been some programs that were looked at, there was reductions that took place in those programs, um, nearing $200,000. Um, my priorities would, in fact, be looking at the staffing ratios with more funding, because I, I do not want an increase in class size. I do realize that some of this funding is tied to very specific things, so I know that we're going to be a little limited there, but, um, and then I, I feel like, though, Dr. Robertson's heard our concerns, we've just appointed him here in January, and I, I would like to support him with his first budget. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin? Oh, did, Ms. Owens, you were in there. You're good? Okay. Okay.
Well, I, I just wanted to make just a few comments. First of all, I ha, I was actually president of the PTSA at Kempsville High School when we were having those discussions. Um, Mr. Harris was the principal at the time, and we sat year after year about our declining enrollment, um, because we were starting to struggle with even hitting 1,500. And so, I definitely remember sitting there, and the concern, because, gosh, I mean, Kempsville High School is such a staple, it's, um, you know, in the community. So, I was very concerned, and I was so thrilled that Mr. Harris, um, with the cooperation of the rest of the division, um, was able to get that EBA academy in Kempsville, and it, and it's thriving, um, and just making such a difference to those students. So, I, I'm, I'm incredibly grateful. I know how that feels, though, with the declining enrollment and looking at that, um, and with concern. Um, I, I would like to also just make a comment about the arts, because, you know, I was doing a learning walk the other day, and it was so funny, when I was going into a, a class, and it was a geometry class, and I have to be honest with you, I couldn't remember, you know, she was asking, "What is a quadrilateral?" And I was like, I was trying to rack my brain, I couldn't really remember what that was, you know, and, um, but, you know, I still play piano to this day. And so, I really think that the things that stick with you throughout this high school experience, you know, certainly, learning is incredibly important, absolutely, 100%. But it's just interesting what you take with you for the rest of your life, and I have to say that the arts is something that I still do today. So, anyway, just my thoughts.
Ms. Owens?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me the extra minute or two to try and gather my thoughts over here, um, because I do have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I guess my first question is in regards to the, uh, update that we got about funding for the recovery school, um, and this may be a Dr. Robertson question. Do we have a monetary commitment from all of the other participating districts at this time?
I reached out to the four neighboring cities, superintendents, on Friday with an email. I've now heard back from three of the four that, uh, they, they've gone to their board, and they're interested in continuing the conversation. I threw out to the four divisions that I felt like everybody needed to put in $100,000 in support of the recovery school and getting it up and running, and, um, I'm actually meeting with the superintendents tomorrow to continue that conversation, because I think everybody needs to have the same dollar amount going in, since we're going to share the, the recovery school, just like we do with, like, CSEP, for example. Um, so, that's where we are right now. There is a plan to come back to the board, May 14th, and do a workshop on where we are in the recovery school process. By that time, all of the other divisions- By that time, all of the other divisions will have had a chance to talk to their school boards about this expectation. It's not an expectation, about this ask for them to put $100,000 in so that this board can know what's going on.
Okay. So our district would be putting in like at least 500,000? Is that what we were saying from our last earmark? And everybody else is going to put in 100,000?
No. The, the, this board earmarked $500,000 in support of the recovery school. What this board has not done yet to me, in, in terms of telling me is how much to put in. The, the state is going to put in 500,000. My thought was that with another 500,000, that gives us a million dollars. We should be able to find a building somewhere to be able to retrofit, to get this thing up and running. I won't know that until we get into the conversations. But this board will be the ones to direct, or do you want to put all that $500,000 into recovery school at the beginning? I, I don't know.
Okay.
It's been earmarked though to support the recovery school. So.
Okay. My second question still in regards to recovery school. Do we have any commitments from a non-educational partner that has expertise in addiction and recovery services for adolescents?
No, we do not. That's remains to be done. We would need to find a partner. Yes.
Okay. And those things are, are big concerns for me. In this budget that is as tight as it is, that we are earmarking and planning money when we don't have a provider partner for something that is extremely specialized. We certainly have teaching staff that have amazing gifts that we can't keep in our, our schools right now that we're talking about the, the ratios. And asking them to take on something that is as sensitive and has to be done correctly. I, I feel really uncomfortable getting into a situation with children's lives and families' lives if we can't say we are going to do it top notch. And that's not something that's already covered within our educational spectrum. We need a, a strong partner who's able to really take the lead on, on the recovery part of a recovery school. I'm also concerned about the CIP ship is sinking. There's no money to build any new schools. We are on plans for some of our high schools to get over 100 years old. We are barely keeping up with maintenance at this point. But the plan is to find a new building and retrofit and start a whole new program when we don't have the programs that we currently have committed to on the level of stable grounds that I, I would like to see. I am not anti-recovery school, but I am pro doing it the right way with the right expertise and not putting frankly, students' lives in jeopardy by moving them into a situation that's not well structured. I don't want us to play guinea pig with students. Feel more comfortable if we were doing it with a new art program. Lot less comfortable with students who are working into recovery. So I have a lot of heartburn with the money being directed when we don't have those pieces in place. Obviously, I voted no on earmarking the money. But we work as a board and we go by the will of the board. So it's my comments there. In terms of the arts that we continue to hear about and, and everybody gives their story about how the arts was helpful to them as a, a student, as teenager. And I was in marching band here in Virginia Beach. I was a charter member of the Marching Dolphins multiple years. But ultimately, nobody really cares about our stories unless there's something behind it that changes something for them. I want to say that I do not blame the principals for the cuts and the hard decisions that they're making right now based on hold up the book and this is what the book says. And they're making the decisions that they need to make. I think it's up to us as a board to prioritize things that are important to us. I hear you on the JV sports, but it's not quite equivalent to me with our, our fine arts programs. About don't have enough for a JV football team. We don't have enough for an orchestra program. It's not quite equivalent for me, but I, I get the concept. One of the parents who spoke today talked about transparency in the cuts. And I think that we, you are being transparent in saying we are not cutting arts. We have staffing issues. But I think we do need to be more transparent in individual schools when they are at risk of losing a fine art program to send out an email or a phone call or an alert, whatever, and say, here's where our staffing is. We need enrollment or we're going to have to go down or we're going to lose programs. If we're not doing that to alert people for them to think about it in advance, and I don't feel like we are serving those programs as well as we should be. Really concerned about having the, you know, point two teacher here for arts or a point six band teacher. Because if we, if we are prioritizing arts that they are important to us, then we want high quality teachers in those positions. And I don't know that many high quality teachers that are saying, I, I'm looking for a point two position with no benefits. That's what I'm really out there trying to find right now. And that's what we are opening up in those situations. And then we don't have a, a staff member who gets in that position and who's pounding the pavement and we slowly lose those programs. I would ultimately like to see, and it's not directly into this budget vote, which I am going to support the budget, I'll put that out there. But I, I would like to see the, the board come through, whether through resolution or policy or otherwise. Some kind of a commitment to having a full-time band director, orchestra and chorus at every high school for three years to see if the programs can grow. If having three years of a full-time, high-quality instructor in there can't keep the program sustainable and we're doing this notification of transparency when we don't have the enrollment, then I feel like I could sleep and say, we made it a priority. We gave the opportunity for those programs to grow and flourish after the pandemic where they took a big hit, after the academy programs that had unintentional consequences of pulling cer- certain students out of certain schools and focusing fine art students out of schools. And then my other comment would be if we're looking at the, the arts as a, as a big picture, I don't think there's a magic bullet answer. But if ODS and Plaza can have an additional elective block, I think we might need to have a serious look at what needs to happen at our other middle schools to offer them the same opportunity. Because it is a trickle-up effect, if that makes, if that's a word, of middle school students who have the opportunity then are looking for that in, in high school. And then the final comment about, I agree with Ms. Manning and others who have mentioned looking at updating that staffing ratio if additional money is available. I'm concerned, I'm highly concerned that we're upping the, the staffing ratio, which we have to do for budgetary reasons. But we're not doing it across the board because it's not happening at ODS because the five-year plan guarantees them lower ratio. But our students and other across the city schools who don't have the gifted label, who maybe need that ratio even more, aren't getting it. And so I, I think those are some things that we need to look at for equity purposes. Just as an overall picture. All those comments to say, I will support this budget, but I, I'd like to see some work from the board doing priorities, not putting that on the principal. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Okay. There was so much there. I, I'm not going to comment on everything. The recovery school, I, we do not plan, Dr. Robertson, correct me if I'm mistaken here. But I don't, or Mr. Delaney, when we started talking about this before COVID and then we had to take a little break because of COVID and we started this back up again, there was no plan just to play guinea pigs with these students and, and just have existing staff without qualifications to interact or be in charge of them. In fact, and I wish that Mr. Sol, Dr. Solner was here because I know at one point tentatively, we just reached out to different people to see if there was interest, very qualified, qualified professionals. So can you just expand on that? Because I don't want to get somebody the, you know, the idea that we're, we're, we're not thinking this through because that's going to be recorded out, but it is very specialized.
I think if you recall back to when we were looking at the lab school in the partnership with Old Dominion University. And Mr. Jamison was working with CHKD and other of our partners in therapy. He was researching Barry Robinson. He had, he had a few groups he was interacting with as we put that I lab, or I keep saying I lab, lab school proposal together. And if recall, there was going to be some components in the partnership with Old Dominion where we're going to utilize their counseling programs as a way to support that level of therapy that you're speaking of, Ms. Owens. So I, you know, as you were sharing, I just knew it needed a little refresher that there were some things that were in there. However, I think ODU might be part of a lab school somewhere else. So we're going to have to go through the process again, but we laid some of that foundation and seed around. It would not be necessarily VBCPS teachers ha- heavily involved. We were exploring options through online education because we knew we'd have students that were in AP classes. How, how can we support that? So we, we were, we did pretty extensive legwork behind the scenes to see if this were to be approved, this was the next step. However, that was also with the lab school in mind and ODU knowing they were going to get some component of funding from the state on that. So we'd have to go back and kind of relight that fire and flames about that relationship. But we were, we were looking pretty heavily about the need for therapy, not doing it onsite. So when you start looking at a site, like can't be at a school because we knew that would be a challenge. So there was a lot of heavy discussion that we'd have to go back and revisit.
Briefly, the, the existing staff that would do the academics, but the specialized counseling and all that stuff. We had if, and I can't remember exactly, but we had four or five agencies, like CHKD was one of them, Old Dominion, that were very interested. So, and I think that we'll find that we will have many, many, many interested and we'll have to try to whittle it down to decide which one. Because I think that a lot of people and mental health organizations are very interested in this. So I just want to clear, clear that up. And, and, and the funding, when we first initially came up with the budget, when we were just doing it ourselves, that was also in the budget to, to seek outside sources to be able to, to work with these students in the capacity that they needed. I just wanted to clear that up so that my colleagues wouldn't be, you know, not, not understanding that. I'm going to hold my con, I, I'm not going to comment on anything else.
Okay. Ms. Rigs?
Can I ask for you guys, someone to explain either Mr. Dr. Smith or Dr. Robertson? Why does, explain to us, why does ODS or in Plaza have more opportunities for electives?
So in their sixth grades, they're required to take a foreign language one level course. They're also required by VDOE to take help in PE. And so that third course allows them to take another elective such as band orchestra course or. So that's the reasoning why they have the programs. For the IB part of it, they're school-wide. So it's just not the back lawyer program itself. It's a school-wide program.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions myself. So in reference to the recovery school, I think in fairness to the board, there are probably still a lot, there are a lot more questions than there are answers. And given that, so first, CSEP, we pay more for CSEP than other divisions, correct? Because we have more students that attend. Okay.
That's correct.
So it, it needs further conversation, probably more in-depth conversation to bring some of these superintendents really into the fold. Because, you know, we've pretty much just asked for $100,000 and we've gotten three out of the four to respond. But we don't know what we're responding to. And so one of, one of the things that you've said is that every year by December 1st, there needs to be a report to the Chair of Appropriations. So my question would be by this December, what is the General Assembly expecting from us about this recovery school by December 1st in order to say, okay, you've, you've done well with that half a million dollars. We know in the second half of the budget that we've got an additional 250,000. But, you know, we're talking about retrofitting a building. We know what building costs are. We're talking, this is a heavy lift. And so what do you think that they're expecting by December 1st from us?
So right now, the language that we've been able to get through just talks about the planning, implementation and the outcomes. And certainly it's an ongoing thing. I don't know if they will provide us any type of template to do that type of reporting. Many times when we have federal funding or state funding and we have to report out, they provide us a template so that everybody's consistent in what they put, report out. So we'll have to wait and see how that comes out. But right now, it's just generally, you know, what you're going to plan, what you're going to implement and what outcomes. And so it, it looks kind of like when you do grant applications. It's like, this is what you think you're going to do. This is what you think you're going to implement and this is the outcomes we think we're going to see. So there's work to be done, but we haven't seen any specifics other than just what's been in the language that came out of the conference committee.
Okay. So then we also need to ask ourselves, in fairness, there was support for it in the General Assembly and the Senate, I mean, in the General Assembly this year. However, what happens if that support wanes and we aren't getting funding from the state for these program, for this program anymore? So divisions then have to be able to have the funds to step up to, to fund, to fund this program. And so I, I think in fairness to this board, there are still a lot of questions and we really need to go, go through this properly and know exactly what we really need to think about. So speaking of the General Assembly, it was noted also that, that they're hoping that over the next biennium that we will reach the national average for teacher salary. Considering we have been at the bottom of the barrel. If we take out Fredericksburg salaries, we are almost dead last. What will it take to get us to the national average? Do you know?
I don't know. I would have to, we'd have to look and see and, and work with HR on the national average. So we'd have to look and see what that looks like.
Okay. So how lengthy is our list at the end of the year? Those one-time items that we'd like to purchase? How lengthy is that list if we chose to use our reversion dollars towards the CIP? What would we be giving up other than, of course, buses?
So what that list you saw was having to do with the two-cent reduction. Reversion would become, would be what at the end of this fiscal year based on what's remaining. So our, our practice has been the last three years at least, based on direction from city council and board that we put that money towards CIP. We do it because of the need. We do it to reduce debt service and, and not depend on the debt that we have. So just like 24, 25, 24 is going to take a little bit of a hit comparatively. We are tracking now and looking at that. We do have in the, the current CIP program that we'll put 10.5 million of reversion going to CIP. That's what's in the six-year plan that's already out there. And anything over and above that, likely we will be in front of the board asking for your direction. If we, we probably will make those recommendations. But it certainly will be at the board's direction what the remaining reversion amount would be. I will say right now, we're still got another quarter of the year, but we are probably, the remaining amount of reversion is probably less than $10 million on top of that 10.5. And so I'm striving to stay within that 2% because that is what we're comfortable with and physically responsible with the size of our budget, our operating budget.
Right.
So we, when we start projecting out from this point forward to the end of the year, we start looking at projected salaries, projected expenditures, contracts, what what, what's out there that doesn't need to be out there. So all of that's taking place now. But because we've had, you know, increased costs, what you are seeing is sales tax revenues going down for this year. That impacts our basic aid. So we are seeing a slight decrease in state revenue. Our federal revenue is over budget right now and will remain that way until the end of the fiscal year. And then, of course, the city remains at what they budgeted because they usually are true to what they have unless something unusual happens.
Okay. And if I might, Dr. Robertson? So tonight, we were presented with an AP 10 seminar English class. And I'm all, I'm all for that. But we also do need to be cognizant of the fact that that's going to be based on enrollment. So there might be 25 kids that really want to take that class. And it's only offered once during the day. And that could very much take away from an elective course for a child. So I think, you know, and we, we've, we've chuckled about this, about our Cheesecake Factory offerings, right? Page after page, and that's really fantastic. But those are the things that weigh heavy with families and students. Like, oh, wait, my, my theater class is only offered in third block. And so is that AP seminar class. It's very difficult when a student has to pick like that. And so, and then for, for a student who would be taking that AP class, clearly they're probably on the college path and then really may be forced to choose that, to choose that class. So I think everything that we've heard from families tonight has been valid. And I, I echo my sentiments with, with Mrs. Owen's suggestion for a three-year opportunity to build these programs.
Yeah, so I would tell you, that's implementable.
Okay.
Because we have three schools that are struggling right now.
Okay.
And so to probably make those three schools whole may only cost four or five FTEs. But I'll need direction from the board to do that. Because that would be going against the staffing guidelines. And certainly when we get to that point, we could easily put together a document of guidelines and expectations out to the, to the music elective teachers that we were going to benefit from this and just say, this is a three-year plan for you to build your program. And after the end of three years, we'll return and revert back to the staffing ratios. So we certainly, again, that's not a huge cost.
Okay. I thank you for that. Finding middle ground is always, is sometimes hard, but always appreciated, so. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Oh, I think the CIP.
Oh. I'm so sorry.
Ms. Melonick, if I could, before Mr. Freeman goes, Ms. Brown asked a really good question here. She said, is this something we can do today? And I said, it's not something we can do today because we don't have the funds to do that today.
Correct.
When the state settles their budget and the City Council settles what they're going to do, we may very well have the funds then.
Okay.
Now, the downside of that is some of those kids may have already made some choices that they're, they're, at that point, they don't want to revert back to.
Are they locked in?
They are not locked in.
Okay.
They are not locked in.
Okay.
But when kids get to May and June, they're, but they, so anyway, we just can't do it today because we don't have the funds to do it.
Okay. And can I ask one more question? Do all middle school students' parents have to sign off on their, on their course list? Does that happen in high school also?
Yeah, they get a course verification form that goes home to review and sign off on. And I think, yeah, you asked, you answered a good question there. If you think back to that AP seminar course, it goes to the opposite side of choice. Because you have kids in academies that are saying, I can't take an AP course because I'm bound by courses here.
Correct.
So thank you for the opportunity you're providing me to do that. So.
I understand.
That balance is, is a challenge. But yeah, they, they get, I think what parents that are listening need to really do is really take a hard look and be engaged in the conversation of what's offered? What are the pathways that are there? If I'm signing up this year, what does it mean for next year? Is there other opportunities? I think of a high school that offers guitar and piano on the four by four that did not exist three years ago, that you're finding kids wanting to take those type of electives. So I think in any of that, it's really understanding the course offerings that are there, having a good conversation with your school counselor, and a good conversation with your child about there's certain things you may not be able to do. Let's really carve out where you want to end up and go. And then the, the reality sometimes of what, what means, what's going to get you into colleges and what is not, sometimes is blurred.
Yes.
Like, I must do this to get into college, and that's not always the case. They're looking for other skillsets that will get you into those arenas. So there's a lot of education that we try to provide that just people have to continually engage in.
And as we heard from a parent tonight, will be thrilled, I'm sure, not to have to pay an extra $36,000 for college, so. Please do not take my exit personally. I'll be right back. Yes.
Does that mean I can go, though?
Yes, you may.
All right. Good evening, Chair Melonick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. Here is the proposed funding summary for the CIP. The majority of your questions for this point have been focused on new construction project. As a refresher, the most significant part of the proposed CIP is the shift in emphasis towards maintenance projects. We've briefed you many times now on the underfunding and loss of buying power in the CIP. HVAC, re-roofing, foundation, fire alarm replacements, for example, have been underfunded. And the CIP attempts to put us on a recovery path for maintenance. Historically, half of the annual appropriations would go to maintenance and half to new construction. So for this year, 63.8 million. So roughly half of that is 32 million. Historically, would have gone to maintenance and half would have gone to new construction. For this CIP, we've increased the maintenance portion to roughly 44 million and new construction to roughly 19 million. So about 12 million more going to maintenance projects to what we, than what we've historically done. In addition to that 12 million, about 15 million has been shifted out of the Bayside High School project to support HVAC, re-roofing, foundations, fire alarm replacements. This money will be used to complete projects we have planned for this summer and will enable proper planning and designs to support maintenance projects to begin next summer and beyond. For the new construction projects, we must maintain those in the CIP because we're still receiving invoices to close out the interim agreement. We're on track to remove Bayside High School from this list for next year's CIP, if that remains the will of the board. After working with our budget team in the city, there's one adjustment made to this page on the CIP. The six-year appropriations to date and the appropriations to date for Prince San High School have been reduced by 11 million from what's in the book. So it now properly reflects a little bit over 125 million for six-year appropriations and 113 million in appropriations to date for Prince San High School. Given the concerns some of you expressed about approving the estimated size and cost of the new construction projects, we've shared with you several times what it could look like and how the board maintains control over how we move forward. We've added language to the pages in the CIP that reference new construction. So at the bottom of the page in the red rectangular box, I know it's small, so I'll read it off again. Total project cost slash new construction amount is partly based on 2023 educational specifications. Educational specifications and the associated designs will be reviewed under a separate process with the school board, which may result in a change in square footage and cost. New construction projects will not go out for bid without school board approval separate from the CIP. So it's what staff's been sharing with you. We'll want to formalize it so that it's in the document so that everybody can see it. In addition, we've also included the language in the CIP resolution. Here's the proposed funding source slide. No changes here. And you've seen this slide several times now. This is what we propose for future school board meetings. We propose that we review the educational specifications and current design of the priority school. We receive direction from the school board for areas to explore reductions. Then staff can develop options based on the school board guidance to reduce the size of the design. We would then return to the board with recommendations reflecting the board guidance so that we can then proceed to 100% design. We're targeting 2026 for construction. And so as far as the future school board meeting, that current date that we're planning on is April 16th, to be able to come back with you and have that discussion. If the school board decides to go in an entirely different direction related to new construction, those options will remain open as well. In summary, the CIP shifts our priority towards funding much-needed maintenance projects like HVAC, re-roofing, foundation, and fire alarm replacements. The CIP will enable us to execute our planned projects this summer and enable greater number of projects for next summer. And for the new construction, all options remain on the table with the board prior to proceeding to any further, prior to proceeding any further with design or construction. So with that, we'll take your questions.
You did not need to. Okay. Does anybody else have anything? All right.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now to the consent agenda. This evening, on our consent agenda is policy review committee recommendations. One, policy 2-42, school support process. Two, policy 2-50, appointment, reappointment and reclassification. Three, policy 5-45, use of drugs, alcohol, tobacco products, and nicotine vapor or alternative nicotine project, products. Four, policy 6-69, psychological services. And policy five, policy 7-43, fundraising by students. In addition, we have the Renaissance Academy Alternative Education Program One Year Implementation Evaluation and the recommendation of general contractor Holland Road Annex Scratch Cooking with HVAC. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent items? Does anyone need one moved? All right, hearing none. I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Franklin. And this evening, we will, let's see. Okay. Any discussion?
We have no resolutions, too? No resolutions this evening?
Okay. All right. The voting board is open.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eight ayes for the approval of the consent agenda. And just, there are two abstentions because Ms. Weems and Ms. Owens are not present in the chamber during the vote.
Okay. All right. All right, on to action, the personnel report and administrative appointments. I call for a motion to approve the March 12th, 2024 Personnel Report. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? This evening, there are no administrative appointments, so the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eight ayes in favor of the Personnel Report being approved. And again, abstention from Ms. Owens and Ms. Weems as they are not present in the chamber during the time of vote.
Okay. All right, in addition, we have the Policy Review Committee Recommendations by Law 1, 1-12, Oath of Office. I call for a motion to approve by Law 1-12, Oath of Office. Motion made by Ms. Brown, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any discussion? All right, then the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, there are eight ayes in favor of the motion for by Law 1-12. Again, Ms. Owens and Ms. Weems had to abstain. They are not present during the vote.
All right, moving on to by Law 1-13, Orientation in Service Programs. I call for a motion to approve by Law 1-13. Motion made by Mr. Culpepper, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes for by Law 1-13, so that did pass. And again, Ms. Weems had to abstain. She was not present during the vote.
Okay, next, the Resolution Regarding School Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2425. I call for a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? We are going to read it. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Manningham.
Yeah, I was just going to request that we wait for Ms. Weems to come from the bathroom.
Well, we have to read the resolution.
Okay.
So we'll read the resolution while she's, while she's out, and then we'll wait for the vote. All right, Ms. Franklin.
Whereas the mission of Virginia Beach City Public Schools VBCPS in partnership with the entire community is to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas the school board of the City of Virginia Beach has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan and school improvement priorities to guide budgetary decisions. And whereas the school board has studied the proposed fiscal year 202425 operating budget in view of state and federal requirements, the strategic plan prioritizes community expectations, competitive compensation for employees, and the best educational interest of its students. And whereas the proposed operating budget for the instructional experience-based step pay scale provides a 1.5% experience step for all eligible employees on the scale with no adjustment to the entry-level salary. And whereas the proposed operating budget for the Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale provides a 1% step increase for all eligible employees with one to four years of, I'm sorry, one to 14 years of experience, and a 1.5% step increase for all eligible employees with 15 and above years of experience. And whereas the proposed operating budget also recommends increasing the entry-level hourly rate for grade seven on the Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale to $15, aimed at strengthening the division's efforts to recruit and retain bus assistants, cafeteria assistants, and Custodian I employees. And whereas the city-slash-school revenue sharing policy provides 46.75% of certain general fund revenues to meet obligations of the school board of the City of Virginia Beach. And whereas the total funds requested for the operating budget from the City of Virginia Beach to the school board of the City of Virginia Beach are 526, 781, 515 million. And whereas the debt service payment is estimated to be 50 million, 71, 611, leaving a balance of 476, 709, 904 million to allocate between the operating budget and the Capital Improvement Program, CIP. And now therefore be it resolved that the 476, 709, 904 million be allocated as follows. 773, 473, 709, 904 million to the operating budget and 3 million to schools pay-as-you-go, pay-go for the CIP. And be it further resolved that federal funds of 14, 744, 107 million, state funds of 455, 947, 171 million, and other local funds of 4,457,538 be added to the operating budget, bringing it to a total of 948, 858, 720 million. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests a lump sum appropriation of 948, 858, 720 million from the City Council of Virginia Beach for the school board operating budget. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests an appropriation of 206, 951, 119 million for categorical grants and other special revenue funds comprised of categorical grants for 136, 146, 902 million, Green Run Collegiate for 4,873,251, and other special revenue funds in the amount of 65 million, 930,966. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests a lump sum appropriation of 1 billion, 155,000, or, I'm sorry, 1 billion, 1,55809, 839 million for the total of all funds. total of all funds, $948,858,720 million for the operating budget, plus $206,951,119 million for categorical grants and other special revenue funds. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the School Board, and the clerk of the School Board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the City Council, the city manager, and the city clerk, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 12th day of March 2024.
Okay, now that that resolution's been read, does anybody have any further discussion? The voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, so the motion did pass for the Resolution Regarding the School Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-2025.
Thank you. All right, now the Resolution Regarding Capital Improvement Program, the CIP, for fiscal year 2425 through fiscal year 2930. I call for a motion to approve the capital improvement for fiscal year 2425 through 2930. Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Miss, motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Mr. Callen. Sorry about that. Ms. Franklin, would you read the resolution?
Yes. Whereas the mission of Virginia Beach City Public Schools in partnership with the entire community is to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan and school improvement priorities to guide budgetary decisions. And whereas the primary funding sources for the Capital Improvement Program, CIP, are charter bonds, public facility revenue bonds, and reversion funding. And whereas the city/school revenue sharing policy provides 46.75% of certain general fund revenues to meet obligations of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach. And whereas the city/school revenue sharing policy allocates funds first to debt service while the balance is used for the operating budget and the CIP. And whereas $3 million will be allocated to schools, pay-as-you-go, pay-go for the CIP. And whereas the School Board has comprehensively reviewed all sources of funding, projected various scenarios, and prioritized the needs of the operating and CIP budgets. And whereas total project costs, new construction amounts are partly based on the 2023 educational specifications. And whereas educational specifications and the associated designs will be reviewed under a separate process with the School Board, which may result in a change in square footage and cost. And whereas new construction projects will not go out for bed without School Board approval separate from the CIP. And now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach adopts a CIP program of $793,904,737 million, as shown on the attached School Board Funding Summary and Project Summary dated March 12th, 2024. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the School Board, and the clerk of the School Board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the City Council, the city manager, and the city clerk, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 12th day of March 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? All right, the voting board is open. Oh, I'm sorry, I would see it now, Ms. Brown.
So I think it comes as no surprise that I don't agree with the numbers proposed on page 13, because I've been pretty outspoken about those costs that are intrinsically related to the square footage. I don't believe that those costs best support moving forward to support as many students as possible and move forward with our buildings. However, I do appreciate the changes made to the Capital Improvement Project page and the changes to the resolution to address these concerns. I appreciate the flexibility of our staff, and I want to see our HVAC, re-roofing, fire alarm replacement projects move forward. Those changes help give me confidence, especially considering the explanation provided to the board that there will be an opportunity to change direction if needed in the process. So I will be supporting the CIP and trusting the process, and I hope that my colleagues will work to find cost and size efficiencies and creative compromises when this discussion comes forward in April. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes in favor of the Resolution Regarding the Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Year 2024 through Fiscal Year 2930, so it did pass.
All right. Excellent. All right, do any School Board members have anything to report for committee, organization, or board reports? Ms. Owens.
Just an update that the PRC meeting that was originally scheduled for this Thursday has been rescheduled to next Thursday, the 21st, at 10:00 a.m., and we'll be meeting in the Einstein Room as we usually do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so I attended the GACAC meeting on last Monday and the Gifted Advisory Committee, and I have to say that we are really making great progress with the five-year plan, and they're working very, very hard comprehensively with subcommittees to really bring forth a great recommendation from the GACAC group. So I just want to let you know, they're doing a great job there. And then I also had an opportunity to go to the CACAC Committee as well, and I've just got to, I have to say that it's just a fantastic committee. So one of the things, so thank you. One of the things that I really learned, which I'm not sure, actually, there was, even the chair of the committee kind of was like, oh my gosh, I didn't realize this. But one of the things I learned was, one, and she knew this one, but do you, part of our federal requirement for funding is that we do provide resources, and I wish Ms. Myers-Dobbs was here, maybe as close she can help us, but providing resources to homeschoolers and private schoolers, and I think there's a specific word, which I can't remember, but, but we are providing some resources, that's part of our requirement. So I thought that was really interesting that we're doing that as part of our application process. So that was really interesting, and actually, when the question was asked, who participates more, homeschoolers or private schoolers, and actually, it's the private schoolers who take advantage of it more often. And I, there was even a parent who was a CSAP employee, and she said that she did have a child in private school, and she decided to pull them out, put them in Virginia Beach just because of the extensive amount of support and resources we have here. So I thought that was really a boondoggle for our division, just to hear that from an employee and also a parent. And then lastly, I have got to tell you, the Assistant Technology Representative came to talk to us, and this is where I thought was really interesting, because we have got tools available to every single IEP student who has the ability to have the Read Write and, you know, some other tools available to them. And again, the same parent was talking about the fact that with these tools, she went from having the IEP for her child to being able to come off the IEP in 10th grade and then, you know, be able to go to college. And so, and then the child, the student was able to, there in college, take those tools that she learned and then start looking online for similar tools. And so I just think that it's really cool that we're able to provide those resources and a pathway to be able to help graduate our kids from having an IEP to potentially not, or being able to use those resources as they progress to higher education. So, so I do want to let you know that, parents, if you have an IEP, please talk to your caseworker. Make sure that you have all the tools and resources available. We have a laser printer that is providing, and I believe the board had the opportunity, and they're actually coming to talk to us on the 26th, and give a, and Dr. Ronnie Myers-Dobb is going to provide an update to us, but they actually have plastic covers for computers and just all of the things that we're providing. So I just have to say, it was a great meeting, and we do not have a meeting in April, just to let you know.
Anybody else? Tomorrow's the State of the City address. Dr. Robertson and I will be there. This is a Chamber-sponsored event. I, I don't know why, not pointing a finger, why the whole board wasn't invited, and I'm sorry for that, and my goal is to make sure that next year, that hopefully, we know it's about this time of year that we can start reaching out to the Chamber earlier. We actually just were invited last week, and so we will report back to you all, and of course, I'm sure it'll be livestreamed. So, I see nothing else, and so, yes, I know, so the board will now recess into a closed session. Oh, she has to.
She has to read into closed.
Okay, she will, but we will recess into closed session.
All right, I move that the School Board recessed into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law, Seth Fworth, and Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, 2, 7, 8, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Discussion consideration are interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals; two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters, or any matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if this student is a minor, the student's parents, or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting. If such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or in which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in the subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring a provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in the subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, School Board Member, District 4, Appointment, Review of Applications, Choose Applicants, Interview, Review of Interview, and Appointment Process and Timelines, B, Amendment to Student Discrimination Appeal Resolution.
So the motion was made by Ms. Franklin, and I'll take Ms. Riggs. I'll take Ms. Riggs as the second. Any discussion? Voting board is open. No, no, it was not. It was, Jennifer made the motion through reading it, she read it, and it started with "I move." The second was by Ms. Riggs.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes, and motion did pass, are going to closed session.